Everyone's microphone on. All right, let's begin our meeting. We welcome everyone here. Thank you for being here. We also welcome those who are viewing us over the, um, our channel, our YouTube channel. Today is Tuesday, March 29th, 2022. We are going to go ahead with our meeting here, and we have an opening from Councilman David Erickson.
I'd like to do my opening in the form of prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we're indeed grateful to be able to be here. We're grateful for the system that we have and the opportunities that are given to us to speak freely, to share our feelings, and to, uh, come to conclusions that will help everybody. We are grateful for the happiness that we see in this valley, for the moisture we're currently receiving, and knowing that Thou watches over us. We're grateful for those that keep us safe, and those that are in need at this time, we pray for them. We pray for Thee to help us in our decisions tonight. Thy Spirit will direct us. It will make good decisions, that there'll be wisdom in them, and that, uh, we will be blessed in all aspects of it. We again thank Thee for these things and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
And if you'd all stand, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman David Erickson. We appreciate that. All right. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Has everyone had a chance to review and approve the minutes from March 15th?
You know what? I forgot to read them because we got this stuff so late. If you want to pass them, you can, but I just.
I'll make the note.
Okay.
I'll second that. I don't have any notes that I, concerns. I read them so.
I'll need to abstain, but we'll get to that in a minute. Okay, very good. It's been moved and approved and seconded that we approve the minutes from March 15th. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I'll, okay, I'll abstain also because I wasn't here. I did read them, but I wasn't here.
Well, I was running the meeting, so they could all be questionable.
Good deal. All right. We will move on to our report from our county executive, Mr. Zook.
Right, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have, by way of appointments, two reappointments this evening. They are to the Cache County Board of Adjustments. The reappointments are Howell Olson, who serves as the Vice Chair, and Lee Atwood, Lee Atwood, who serves as a board member. So I would present those to for your advice and consent.
Move to approve those?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and approved to, um, and seconded to approve the appointments of Howell Olson and Lee Atwood to the Cache County Board of Adjustments. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Council. Also, I have the February 2022 financial statement that has been provided for you. And then as far as other items, I just wanted to give you an update on the solid waste issue that we've been dealing on, dealing with. I was invited to a meeting with the mayors last week. And at that meeting with the mayors, the, um, the question was asked of all of the mayors who were there, which I think all but two or three were there. I think three were not there. Uh, the group wanted to know if everybody was on board and was as far as working together or if people were going to go their own way. And every mayor there said that it was their intent to work together on this issue. Uh, that that was brought up as a question because, uh, some of the cities were considering or looking at potentially doing their own thing. Uh, and, and the group wanted to know if we were going, if we were going to proceed forward in a unified way or if we were going to be divided. And, uh, at least everyone who was there said that. And then the ones who were not there, uh, I think two of them had previously indicated that they were on board with, with wanting to work with everybody together. And, uh, after that, uh, there was some discussion about how to proceed. And the conversation gravitated toward essentially figuring out what the governance structure should be for dealing with this because, uh, at the previous meeting, there had been discussions about just doing a request for proposals and getting that out there, finding out what the cost would be. But in, uh, a couple of the cities took on that assignment to prepare that. But in so doing, they realized that they weren't sure whose rules this was going to be, under whose purchasing policy, who, who, who would the bid go to? Who all was in? There were, um, a lot of questions that came up, and the group decided that we needed to figure out what our governance structure was going to be, who was going to be doing the bidding and contracting. So they, uh, they asked me if I would work with our county attorney, John Luthy, to look at options for that. And so I've, I've talked to Mr. Luthy about that, and he and his office are doing some research about potential structures. There is the existing body, uh, the Special Service District One, that the council is the governing board of. However, the, uh, the mayors, understandably so, uh, would, would love to have a structure going forward where they have some say and, um, where they, they have representation and, um, directly with, with either a mayor or council member or somebody being involved. They, um, they, they feel a little burned how, how things have, have turned out most recently without them being able to really have a say in the decision process. And, uh, there were a couple of, of discussion points that were made about that, whether or not this body should include a representative from every city or if it should be structured similar to the way the, the Solid Waste Advisory Board is, where there's some county representation, some, some cities from the south, some cities from the north. Uh, that's probably a more manageable solution. So, uh, I brought that request back to John, like I mentioned, and his offices researching that. They, um, they, um, so, so the group, the group essentially wanted, wanted all of the mayors to go back to their councils and, and, and just report those two things. One, that everybody in that meeting felt like it was good for us all to work together rather than being separate. And they, so they want me to ask all of you what your opinion is about that, if you think that's, if you're on board with that as well. And then also, uh, to, to start thinking about governance structure and how, how you might want that to be structured as well. In addition to that, I was invited to a meeting today. Representative Casey Snyder reached out to me, asked me if I could join for lunch today. And we met with Isa Hamud, who is the Environmental Services Director for Logan City and oversees the solid waste program. And, uh, I believe Representative Snyder's intent was to, to start kind of a mediation between, uh, Logan City and. I was invited, sent to the board as well. Well, um, I believe that was his intent, was to begin some kind of a mediation in response to the bill that he ran in relation to, uh, the landfill.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, it was, I think, a very productive conversation, and, um, we discussed some concepts that I think are going to be worth pursuing. Uh, and, um, probably not appropriate to discuss in a public meeting exactly what the negotiations might be for the direction going, but I'd be happy to talk to you individually about, um, the direction that, that was suggested, uh, for moving forward in our relationship with Logan City. And I'll, I'll take that back to the mayor's group as well. So just wanted to give you an update on those discussions and, um, I, I also reached out, and I think I reported this last time, I reached out to Box Elder County, just asking them about their landfill, if they would have capacity, if they'd be able to serve us. Uh, and, um, gonna go out there tomorrow morning and meet with one of their commissioners and just do a little research. If any of you'd like to go with me, I'd love to have you come along. It's nothing formal, just informally going out there, taking a look, asking a couple of questions, and, uh, that, that's a possible alternative landfill site. So, um, no, nothing formal with that either, just investigating. So that's, uh, those are the items I wanted to give you an update on, and that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Zook. Um, do we need to make a decision today on how the council's involved, or should we have that as a whole special?
No, we'll, we'll continue that discussion, and maybe when we have something more, uh, solid to consider, we could put that on for a workshop or something.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right. Items of special interest, we have, uh, the Development Ready Communities Certificate presentation from Mr. Alan Rindlesbacher, the EDC Utah Director of Community Strategy. And he would like us to gather in closer after the presentation and have a picture with all of us. Okay? Mr. Rindlesbacher, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Council. Grateful to be with you to, uh, tonight, uh, council meeting. It's always good to come home to Cache Valley. Uh, I was raised in Amalgas and been away for, uh, all too many years, but it's good to come home. I'm currently with the Economic Development Corporation of Utah, a statewide, private, nonprofit economic development organization. It's, uh, been doing business for thirty, about thirty-five years in the state, working with public and private sector, uh, private, private sector members as well as public sector partners throughout the state of Utah, communities, counties. And of course, we've had a great relationship with Cache County over the last number of years. Pleasure to work with David and Sean and their teams as we continue to, uh, find opportunities to build our economy here in the state of Utah. One of the programs that we have at the EDC Utah is called the Development Ready Communities Program, where we've simply worked to align our resources and the things that we do to build the economy, to work and to teach and to influence and help build partnership relationship with our local partners statewide. And through this five-stage program, we provide a community assessment, which we have, to understand strengths and weaknesses. We, uh, try to better understand your economic development, uh, strategic plans and where you're going. We work with our business development team to bring opportunities to the state or work with, or to the county, or work with existing companies that are here in the, in the valley to see them grow and flourish. And we offer a number of training sessions that Sean's participated with, uh, in learning about the site selection process, RFIs, incentives, and so forth and so on. With that, Sean and team have completed, uh, the five-stage program, and we're now prepared to present that certificate and that certification to you. Now, and I would assume the number of you are familiar with, uh, the Boy Scouts of America. I'm an old Boy Scout scout master. I said some of this program is a lot like, uh, leading a bunch of Boy Scouts to get them their merit badges and their rank advancements. Some of the communities get really excited about it and participate very well. Other committee, uh, other cities and counties, there are participants of somewhat neutral, and some could care less about the certificate. I'm grateful that Sean has been one of my best Boy Scouts that there is. Uh, he's come to every scout meeting, and he's, uh, qualified, uh, for all of his rank advancements and certificates. Sean, that really wasn't part of my words, but all of a sudden it just came out. It's, it's.
So what, what rank is he at? He made it the first class yet?
He's, no, 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 we're, we're gonna, this is his Eagle Scout Award tonight. This is it.
He didn't.
I'm hoping for tender foot, but.
No, 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 we're, uh, we're really going.
He didn't tell you his mom wouldn't let him get his driver's license until he, until he got the award.
Is that, is that the truth? Sean, we never talked about that, but we will later. With that said, uh, if there's no other questions, let me read the certificate, what it says. Cash County is hereby certified a development-ready community, understanding its competitive advantages with a plan to build its local economy, fully prepared to partner with other entities in the state of Utah to build the state's dynamic and esteemed economy. That's signed by Teresa Foxley, our CEO, and also Dan Hemmert, who's the Executive Director of the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. With that, we congratulate you for this, and we appreciate our partnership that we have with you in Cache County. And with that, we present the certificate to you. Now, picture time?
I believe so.
Are we giving this to Sean, or who are we giving that to?
It remains with the county.
Okay.
Sean?
Yeah, Sean.
I'll present it to you. And you, Sheriff, can we all squeeze in?
Yep, let's all squeeze in.
You like to take our candy.
Great, thank you.
Shall we just, um, is everybody there?
You gotta turn that, you gotta turn that off.
Oh.
You're walking back at me.
Okay, yeah.
You get in the back, Nolan.
That's what I was hoping for.
We'll let little Dave up front. Come on, little Dave.
Hang on, I gotta look past the chair. I'm a little one way, but not the other.
That's all better.
Let's trade.
There we go, now I can see you. Dave, here, Dave, here. All right, one, two, three, and one more. One, two.
Very good, thank you.
I imagine you mean knows how to take a picture, must you?
Yeah.
Dale? You tried to teach me in grade school. He didn't do it, but.
Okay, I'll move over here. There we go, thank you. Congratulations, Sean. Thank you for all that you do on that. Appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Rindlesbacher, for bringing that up to us. We appreciate it. Very nice, thank you. All right, very good. We now have an, uh, Bear River Health Department Annual Report from Mr. Jordan Mathius, Mathus, Director and S.T. Hunt, P.I.O. Welcome.
Council, thanks for having us here. We appreciate the opportunity to, to come. We're here representing the Board of Health and fulfilling the statutory obligation that we have to fulfill our accounting to the governing boards of the counties that we represent. In doing so, I want to say that we are reporting that, but, um, as our past meetings have been, we want it to be an open dialogue of how we can improve in fulfilling our responsibility to serve the public and improve the health of our communities. I'm just gonna report on the first little bit. Esti was the one that worked with our team to compile the majority of the report. But I just wanted to highlight, um, Bear River Health Department has been serving these three counties for the last fifty years. As of August 27th of 2021, uh, the first Board of Health meeting was held here in Cache County on August 27th, 1971. And Bear River Health Department has been serving these three counties for the last fifty years. Next is, um, our Board of Health. Just so you know, hopefully you know the makeup of it, but five representatives of our nine-member board, uh, represent Cache County, three represent Box Elder County, and Commissioner Bill Cox represents Rich County. I shared an overall message, and I really believe this message, that, um, an investment in public health is an investment in human capital, which is the most important investment that we can make in a community, um, in trying to improve the overall health and well-being of our community. And it's not something that happens overnight. It's a long-term investment, and, and I believe that, that this recent, um, pandemic has illustrated the fact that, that we need to, to do a little bit better on improving the overall baseline of the health of our population. Um, and that happens on both an individual and a community level. Uh, and so it's something that we're committed to and committed to over the next fifty years as we look forward to the next fifty years of serving our community. With that, I'll touch on the finances, and I'll turn the time over to Esti. The really, if you turn to page three and four, it, it breaks down what our budget expenditures were and where our revenues came from. Uh, the biggest change from year to year, uh, is really, uh, that nineteen percent of COVID dollars that came in, $2.4 million came into the, to the Health Department, um, through expenditures. In addition to that, we also brought in about $2 million in fees, um, from the administration of COVID vaccination. That, all that fee revenue, um, from billing insurance, uh, will actually go to make improvements to both the Logan Building and our Brigham City Buildings to, uh, enhance our ability to offer curbside services a little bit quicker to the public. So it's something that, that started as a result of the pandemic, and the public has been very responsive to it and really liked it, and we wanted to be able to continue to, to offer that. Um, and so with those, with that revenue, we're, we're making some of those changes. That's really the most significant thing. Other things have stayed relatively the same with regards to our finances. If there's no questions on our finances, um, I'm actually gonna turn the time over to Esti to report her work on compiling this report.
Any questions for Jordan?
Question, we've now almost made our way through COVID, and we had a lot of challenges with it. If you look back over the last two years, just how well did we do in Cache County? As you have an overview of, uh, maybe a different, a different angle than what we as council members have. How well did we do?
I think as well as we could, could expect. We, uh, the reason I say underlying health conditions, um, and, and baseline health are an important aspect of that is because it appears even within our own district, counties, that have higher chronic disease-related issues, um, and underlying health conditions as a baseline did worse. And, and what I'm saying is Box Elder County had a higher mortality rate than we have. They have an older population, which also increases their risk factor, but they also have, um, worse population-based health than we do. They have higher obesity rates, they have higher, uh, diabetes rates. And so all those things help to combine, they have higher issues with regards to, um, heart disease. So all those things end up combining to, to lead to a, a higher mortality rate typically. So.
I often wondered in my mind when we would read the reports why Box Elder was always way ahead of Cache with about half the population. And maybe that's.
As far as numbers?
Yeah, numbers.
Numbers of cases and things like that?
Don't worry about, okay, I'm worrying more about actual numbers of people that got sick and were always higher, and they were always had a, you know, a sadness of a higher death rate.
Yeah. So post, post-vaccination, they had a lower vaccine rate, and we, we saw that, um, have an impact on their overall. The, the other thing that they don't have is they don't have the level of acute care. So you're getting that care either at Box Elder or Tree Mountain and then having to be shipped out. Where we are fortunate to be able to have a higher level of acute care here in our community, where we don't have to ship the same level out. So that was a fortunate thing for us, and, and people probably were coming over, but, um, from, from there as well. But it, I think the level of care that we had here and just a little bit higher level of overall population helped, probably helped attribute to that.
And if I could follow up on Gordon's question, just with a comment, that, uh, you know, if you, if you take a job following kind of a, a legend, right? You never want to take a coaching job after the most successful coach in history. Uh, I think Lloyd did a fantastic job for us. Um, and then Jordan took over in the worst of conditions you could possibly do. The last couple of years have been a tire fire. And I just want to express my appreciation in being able to work with him, that I have 100% confidence that the, the, the Board hired the right person, that Craig Butters and, and James Swink and everybody else that was here that had to replace Lloyd did an exceptional job. And, and Jordan, you, you look around the state, you look at what happened with, through COVID, thank you. I appreciate your leadership, and you were, you were fantastic through the whole thing, and I'm so glad that you're here with us.
Well, thanks.
I want to ditto what Paul said, and, and also one of the things I appreciate is you listening to Paul and I and being able to talk with us, like we had the idea about the monoclonal antibodies, and you're willing to listen to our ideas. I wondered how the monoclonal antibodies ended up working out in the end. Did you feel like that was successful?
You know, um, Omicron threw a curveball at that and the fact that there were fewer. Um, but we did, we had great partners, Reed's Pharmacy, we had the MOA, John and his team had, had approved that for them to move into our south building and start offering that, and then, and then the supply, just because they weren't working as well. So it was, we live in a really good community where there's a lot of people willing to step up and help fill the gaps that, you know, the Health Department didn't have the expertise to do or the ability to do, and they were willing to do it, and we found a spot. Unfortunately, it was just a little bit later than, than, had, had those pieces come together a little bit sooner, I think we would have been able to administer quite a few more monoclonal antibodies. And, and they, I mean, the data's there to support that as a, an effective treatment, um, as far as that goes with regards to, um, the Delta variant and previous variants. And last I heard, they still are retooling that to be able to, to work against future variants for individuals. It was, I think, the biggest challenge with regards to that specific treatment was the lack of availability, and then the bureaucratic red tape that was kind of tied to that, saying you have to meet all these criteria in order for us to do it, and part of that was due to the limited quantities. But that was really hard for, that was a really complex communication to really smart people and, and physicians to be able to say that, here's how you determine if an individual. But we had, once again, we had great partners, we were meeting regularly with our hospitals and trying to help them communicate that to their providers so that they could make that available. So, um, anyhow.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jordan.
All right. I have to ask, echo what Mr. Borup just said in regards to the Board hiring the right person for the job. Lloyd has definitely got big shoes to fill, and Jordan's doing a fabulous job as an employee. I can definitely say that, so. Um, I'm excited to show you the rest of this annual report. If you want to just turn to page five with me, I'm gonna walk you through the goals that, um, the Health Department has achieved this past year. Um, these are all of our strategic goals that were developed, that are in our strategic plan. And the first goal that the Health Department has is the people of the Bear River Health District will be among the healthiest, healthiest in the state. And that is a very lofty goal, as you can tell, um, just by the statement in itself. But this past year, we have had some reorganization that has taken place at the Health Department and where we have been able to, um, develop a new health strategy team that has now really focused on data-driven, um, data and helping our staff identify some areas that they can improve on because of the data-driven, um, the data that they're able to pull and help the programs out that can use a little extra to, so that we make sure that we have and can enhance our, um, our focus in the community with certain health programs that may be lacking in areas, and also be able to identify what those areas are because of the addition of some epidemiologists and things like that. So we have had a little bit of reorganization that is definitely going to and has helped this past year in fulfilling this goal. So I'll turn it over to the next page, which shows you your Cache County Health ranking, which is number six in the state, which you should applaud yourselves because that's a pretty great standing for the twenty, for the seventeen counties in Utah. This is the same as last year, you can see, uh, where we do stand. And then the leading causes of death are on the, on the next page. These are 2020 data, um, but you can see the trend, the, the addition of the trend arrows this year does show you in which direction we're going, and it compares us to the state of Utah. Uh, COVID did make its place into number five, both in the state of Utah and in our, um, Health District. But one change, the, one thing that is different with this data showing, um, different with the state-county data versus state data is, or district data, I should say, is the chronic lower respiratory disease, diseases. We're in a decrease in our area, here in Heller Health District compared to the state, which, that's including COPD, chronic bronchitis, emphysema, and asthma. So, um, that is good news, um, for something that we are seeing a decrease in, yeah.
I don't know why.
I don't know why. Like, I can't, I can't identify that. I, I would think, we can, we can look that up probably and have a better understanding.
Like, we're supposed to have the worst air quality.
Yeah, the worst air quality, right? We weren't active, we're getting in the mountains.
Yeah, but we just was told that we were much more healthy in Cache Valley than they are in the other two counties.
We, we are doing a good job here in Cache County, so.
We might hear you, Cash.
That's right.
Number is that died of COVID or with COVID?
Pardon?
Is it died of COVID or with COVID?
Died of COVID. All right, so we'll turn it over to goal number two, which is a great organization that the Health Department will be recognized as a leader in public health for its excellent performance, and this one I'm really excited to touch on. For this goal this year, we chose to talk about accreditation, and the Health Department has been working on becoming a, becoming accredited since 2018. And we were awarded accreditation status from the Public Health Accreditation Board, actually on March 15th of this year, so just bear. So just barely, and that is a huge, a huge success for us. Accreditation means excellence. It means that we are actually serving the community the best that we can and we have the best services available in public health that we're able to provide to our community. So we were thrilled beyond measure to have worked that hard and be able to receive that level of recognition. You'll see what went into that on page 10 for that accreditation and the efforts that were put there. There was quite a bit of effort that went into that. So there's a couple of things with accreditation. There was a survey that was done with all accredited health departments and it did say that one thing, the two major things that it does assure that accredited health departments, 95% of them, will continue to work on quality improvement. And that is essentially what we hope to recognize that you will know and can be assured that we are continually working to give the best service we can to the community. And the other one is being accountable to stakeholders, knowing that we have to be held to a certain level. So something really great with accreditation. There's a lot of wonderful things, but that is, one thing that we really wanted to highlight this year is that that did come to pass. Our goal number three was community partnerships. And I don't think we could touch enough on this with the pandemic. It has brought us really together with our partners. We have not seen such great growth with our partners and such great support from them. Specifically, we highlight in here the Medical Reserve Corps, or our MRC, who has given over 11,000 hours in 2021 alone in helping with vaccination efforts and all sorts of things for the pandemic. So a huge round of applause essentially for that group they have done and gone above and beyond. Not only them, but we also had pharmacies and healthcare providers that helped deliver almost over half of the vaccines in our community. So we're very thankful to them. We work very closely with school districts, emergency medical service groups. We even had Logan Fire Department that was, and other Smithville Fire that were helping us administer vaccines, community and faith-based organizations, work sites, Utah State Universities, and of course, our local governments we can't say enough about. So our partnerships have definitely improved and that is a great goal for the past, or a great achievement this past year. Even though we've had a pandemic to deal with, that was kind of a bright light for us. The next one is showing you a lot of statistics, the next page, which is great to kind of just have a look and identify some of the things that are going on here in our area. I, a few things to kind of highlight here is all of our, you'll see an increase in all of our, kind of our immunization and kind of what we would call our nursing services to the community. We saw an increase in a lot of those. But one thing to note is that in 2019, since 2019, we have continuously still seen a decrease in immunizations in comparison to where we were in 2019. So we have increased, but if you look to 2019, we're not increasing at the same rate that we used to. So the immunizations are just childhood, basic immunizations are not where we would like them to be. So even though they're increasing, it's not to the level we would like. So some effort, again, data-driven decisions will be made to help that hopefully increase. And that's a nationwide thing that we're seeing. So it's not just specific to our area. Showing the growth in our community is shown there, a lot with the environmental health things that are there. You'll see the food truck permits issued increased by 30%. Food establishment permits increased. Septic tanks increased by 53% from 2020 to 2021, showing again the growth that's happening in our area. Our WIC services have actually had a decrease, which is also happening nationwide. So that is something we continually want people to understand is that service that is available, but it has decreased nationwide. The other things on here you can just see are mostly trending in a good direction. We do have a few things that we know we can improve on, but this gives us a good starting point to continue to work for next year. So anything you want to look through there and reach out to us later, you're welcome to. Our last one that I want to talk about is our increased access to services, that we will connect the community to services that are convenient. Another light at the end of the tunnel with the pandemic was that it did really kind of force us to make some adjustments to the things that we do provide to the community and the services. We have now have a large virtual learning community that we can work with, thanks to the COVID pandemic has created that. We have a lot of classes that are offered that way. Curbside services are now something that happens and never had before. And as Jordan mentioned, we are making adjustments to our buildings to make that more optimal for those that are receiving it. Telehealth is now an option for both nursing and WIC. Digital forms have increased in use and access on our website. We now have four community health workers working with the disparate populations in our community and we have, again, a lot of classes taught online. That last page just shows you a lot of the information, the demographics for our area. So that is our annual report. Like I said, you guys have any questions or anything for me? I think I've taken plenty of your time.
For Esti?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Esti. Very good report. And thank you, Jordan. We appreciate that. All right. Very good. It is past 5:30, so we're going to move into our public hearings portion of our meeting and set a public hearing for April 12th for 2022 regarding the county impound facility. Sheriff Jensen, are you here?
Oh.
I have a question on that. Is that not a budget amendment?
Okay. Say that again.
Is that not a budget amendment? To talk about for the county impound facility?
Yeah, he's looking for funds.
So are there certain requirements that are in place for that different than just setting a regular public hearing?
Probably should ask John, right? Because the budget amendments seem to be more of a carryover than new funds or-
I just mean a part of public noticing.
Sure.
I don't know what his budget or what that agenda.
Okay.
It's a potential to transfer money into his budget, possibly from ARPA.
Right.
Tonight we're just-
You'll take care of the notice.
Tonight we're just setting the public-
Okay, very good. Let's just-
I didn't know if we needed to distinguish that it was a financial, that it's a budget opening, really, is what it is. Okay.
All right. So let's set the public hearing then.
Set the public hearing?
Yes, I'm sorry.
We're going to set the public hearing for county impound facility as on April 12th, 2022, as well as ordinance 2022-14 on April 26th, 2022.
Can I make a motion to amend? We also have, the victim services are in need of some funding and possibly from ARPA. Could we also add them as part of that county hearing?
Gina, if you're going to do that, would you link the broad net to the county attorney's office and victim services?
I'm okay with that if the council, so I'll move to amend the motion to include the victim services and the county attorney's office.
And what is that being attached to, Gina?
The motion, the motion to have a public hearing. And it would be the same thing as a budget opening.
So you're setting that on A, on the county impound facility. You're adding victim services and?
County attorney.
On April 12th then, huh?
On April 12th.
Okay.
I will second it, as well as second the amendments.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the, or set a public hearing for April 12th, 2022 for the county impound facility, which will include with the amendment victim services and the attorney, correct? And then also to set public hearing for April 26th, 2022 for ordinance 2022-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Item C. A public hearing for ordinance 2022-13 Cub River Estates 1 rezoned. Request to rezone 44.46 acres from the agricultural A10 zone to the rural 5, RU 5 zone, located at approximately 535 East Cannibal Road in Cove. That's an interesting name for a road.
I don't want to know the story on that road.
I'll have this up in just a moment.
Okay, very good.
That should do it. All right. Well, good evening, council. Good to be with you. I'll just share a brief report on this item and provide a staff perspective and recommendation for this rezone request. Just by way of context, here's the subject property, 44.46 acres. And the same applicant did, just to recall that there was another rezone request recently granted on the south side of, call it Cannibal Road or 12600 North or 800 South in Lewiston. But that rezone request was granted for 26.35 acres south and they're shown in relative proximity to each other. This subject property is along the Cub River and has some frontage along the public road. And just again, showing the vicinity of it and the agricultural use surrounded by other agricultural uses and single-family residential. And in analysis of this, the proposed residential use appears to be compatible with other, anywhere from one or two acre lots up to very large lots. Single-family and residential, single-family residential and agricultural uses appear compatible. The challenge with this rezone request has been to understand the access and the ability to provide, meet county code in accessing the property for potential development. And here I'm just pointing out the slopes over 30% across the frontage, close to the frontage of the property. And here's a photo of a view of the property and that steep bluff or embankment that would have to be traversed to and excavated and to access the property for development. Here's another view and another view. And so staffs in working through the planning commission hearing with the applicant, and the applicant did provide a study of the property and showed that there could be a road that meets the grade requirements, but the excavation of slopes over 30% has become a concern. And so the planning commission recommendation echoes staff's recommendation of denial. And because it does not, it's not consistent with the county land use code to develop steep slopes and then the applicant has not demonstrated the requirements for hardship relief, that the sensitive area regulations imposed by the county deny all reasonable use of the subject property. I will point out that yesterday staff received a letter from the applicant's counsel, legal counsel, and we've not had sufficient time to review that with county attorney's office. And so our recommendation this evening is to table this item to the next meeting and allow additional time to review the the points made in this letter and address those in the next meeting. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. So it looks like we'll table this to the next meeting. Do we need to?
We need a public hearing.
Okay, we need a public hearing. I'm sorry. Public hearing on this item.
So I think we can still go ahead with the public hearing, even though we're not going to make any decisions.
Okay.
We'll talk probably a little in initial.
Yeah, we can talk about it in the later part of the agenda.
So my understanding, we're in a public hearing now and people can come up and comment?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have anyone that wants to come forward on this, at this time, on this issue? If you'll please state your name when you come up.
I'm Vern Fielding with Parker Real Estate, representing the applicant for the rezone request. And just a couple of things. It makes logical sense that this be rezoned. The applicant originally applied in December for this rezon because of this sensitive area and the staff's interpretation of the sensitive slope. We're now going to be into almost April. And so I would just encourage the council to consider the timing. Timing is of the essence. If the interpretation is that nobody could develop this, that makes this property inaccessible. This is the only access to the property. And it's been pointed out that the applicant could easily go in and just put in an ag access that met grade and there would be no problem or requirements or basically just a $50 permit fee. But short of that, he wants to do things the right way. And so I would just encourage the council to consider it, give it, base it on its merits. The disposition, and I'm not speaking for the planning and zoning, but they were ready to approve it at the time. But based on staff's recommendation because of the ordinance, they said it couldn't be done. But I think the council's letter that was provided over the weekend indicates that it is permissible.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to come up? Please state your name.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name's Catherine Pasker. I'm an attorney at Par Brown, Key &amp; Lovelace, and I represent the applicant Sunspot Properties LLC. Just want to be here to, I know the, my letter made it into your materials on Friday, so I wanted to be here to answer any questions, if you had any, about my letter in particular. But we're also happy to work with staff to resolve the, sounds like lingering questions about the application of this ordinance. But I thought our letter explained pretty thoroughly about why we don't think this applies and how really the county council should be focusing at this time about whether the property is, the proposed zone is appropriate for this property. And I think it was pretty clear before the planning commission and none of staff materials have indicated that there's really any concern with the proposed use. So we would encourage in reviewing those materials and hopefully upon further advice of staff to be able to move forward with this rezon. And any, if there are lingering concerns about access, we resolve those at a future time in a subdivision process. So I'm here to answer any questions, but of course, understand if you don't want to move forward with that at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Pasker? Nope.
It's a good letter.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? All right.
Move to close the public hearing.
All right. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we close this public hearing on ordinance 2022-13. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. All right. Now on the back of this, we have public hearing resolution 2022-07. A resolution declaring county interest in real property located on Wolfpack Way, described as parcel number 04-058-0048 as surplus property.
Go ahead and open the paper.
Anyone would like to address this for the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing for resolution number 2022-07. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Public hearing resolution 2022-08. A resolution authorizing conveyance of real property located on Wolfpack Way, described as parcel number 04-058-0048. Anyone here to address this?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Chris, were you coming forward on this? No. Okay, okay, thanks. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on resolution 2022-08. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. We need to wait till 6 o'clock to do the next item. So we'll return to the front and we have Sarah Fitzgerald here from CAPSA and she would like to give us a little presentation.
Hello, I am Sarah Fitzgerald. I'm the chief communications officer with CAPSA. It's nice to see you all tonight. I'm here on a more sobering topic. I'm here to talk about Sexual Assault Awareness Month, which is April. So thank you for letting us be here and be a part of this meeting tonight. I just want to share a few numbers and statistics with you about what we've experienced at CAPSA in the past year. In 2021, we received over 750 cri- In two thousand and twenty-one, we received over seven hundred and fifty crisis calls, specifically where sexual assault and rape was the primary issue. We caseworkers spent over eight thousand hours working with sexual assault survivors. Our therapists spent over twenty-eight hundred hours in therapy with sexual assault survivors. And CAPSA responded to thirty-nine Code R exams, which are sexual assault examinations that take place at Cache Valley Hospital. In the past year, CAPSA served over two hundred and eighty-eight clients who experienced a sexual assault. And in January and February of this year alone, we've already helped over a hundred sexual assault victims, which is a higher number than we've seen in recent years. We know that individuals in our community are experiencing sexual assault and rape, and I want to talk about the best way we can respond to this, which is to start by believing. Start by believing is actually a national campaign, but locally, we've actually partnered with Utah State University to help spread this message. When we start by believing, we help a survivor on their journey to find hope and healing. A few reasons why CAPSA staff have responded this way is, and here are their answers. They've said, "I start by believing because everyone deserves the right to be heard and supported." "I start by believing because no one should have to go through the aftermath of a sexual assault alone." "I start by believing because so many other questions, so many others question or don't believe survivors. I start by believing because I want to stop the cycle of sexual violence. I start by believing because it can make all the difference in the life of a survivor." And we know this to be true. When we start by believing, we can make all the difference, and that is what we strive for at CAPSA. One survivor wrote to us thanking us and sharing her story, and she said, "I received help at a time in my life where I truly felt as though I had no one to talk to, nor someone to help me through what I was going through. Similar to other women, I felt heard, believed, trusted, and validated. Thank you for believing me." We're really grateful for this community's support, and we hope that we can continue to partner with you all in preventing sexual assault and sexual abuse in our community. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Do you have any questions for Sarah?
Just one really quick comment. We had that workshop with all the nonprofits a little bit ago, and CAPSA was definitely there, so we just wanted to thank you for
Thank you.
... your participation, all you do in the community. It's a very hugely valuable service and an integral part of making this wonderful place it is to live, so thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, I have a question for you.
You bet.
Probably one that's difficult to answer, but I'd like to know your opinion. You said you've seen an increase in sexual assault so far this year. Do you see that as a more that people are more willing to report it, or is it an actual increase in assaults? What's your take on why those numbers are up?
It's really hard to say what the actual reasoning is. It could be a result of more reporting. The hard part with statistics like this is we might not never know, really. That being said, we also know that a lot of people don't report, and so we see that this number of a hundred people so far in just January, February, January and February here in our community, and yet we probably know that the number is more realistically three to four times that.
Wow.
Yeah, which is, yeah, that's awful.
Yeah.
But that's also why we're here, is to support and be there for victims and survivors. So I do have a pledge board for you all to sign. You guys are going to be in a meeting tomorrow, it sounds like Janine said, so if you guys will take this to your meeting tomorrow, sign it, take a photo with it, pledge for you all to start by believing are survivors of sexual assault, and then we'll make sure to share it on our social media.
Excellent, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. We will take care of that, Sarah.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we've got five minutes. I don't know, we've got a lot of property tax exemption things to talk over.
I'd like to make a motion on that. Let me make, I want to make a motion on that, because there were so many of them, and it was really difficult to get a chance to read them. I would move that we move them to the next meeting, except for the religious ones, which are easy. There wasn't any controversy about them. Approve the religious ones, move the other ones to the next meeting.
I'm sorry, Jess? Okay.
There's a motion. I would ask that there would be a second, since I have a motion on the floor.
Is anybody willing to second that motion?
What was the motion? First, to move everybody but religious?
Yeah.
Till next week?
Uh huh.
I'll second that.
I can't say anything wrong with seconding it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set the Board of Equalization matters except for the religion portion of those until next week. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
I said aye, sorry.
Okay.
Well, I was just going to say that essentially, nothing has changed in the past year, so to approve it last year would be essentially to approve it again this year. There's only two new, and so really, nothing changed.
We'd like to review them, we'd like to read them all. It's important to treat them all fair.
And that's your duty, is to be the Board of Equalization, so totally understand. Just no changes.
Give us more time to review them.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Jess, appreciate your input. All right, so that said, we still have three minutes. Let's talk about the religious ones on here. Okay, Diana, did you have something that you wanted to add, or do you want to come forward? Does anyone have any questions for Diana?
We need a vote to go into Board of Equalization.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, yes.
I move to go into the Board of Equalization.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we go into Board of Equalization. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, very good, thanks, Diana.
I'll just say there were a lot, there were fifty-eight that were supplied to the council of those, twenty-three are religious. We really have no change. The Episcopal is going to be included with the charitable, so the twenty-three you're moving are religious, they're longstanding with the council's approval in prior years, so no changes. We recommend approval on all the religious. Any questions?
I do have a question, Diana, on some of those, and not all of these are religious, but I noticed on the certification that some of them had a printed name. Does that work as an actual signature on the certification page?
It does.
Okay, now.
They moved that we could have electronic signatures quite a few years ago through the state tax commission in their rulemaking.
And these are not on the religious ones, but there were two items that I found that did not have either a printed signature or nothing, no signature at all on the certification.
Do you make note of those?
Yes, I've got these right here. Okay, very good, I'll let you know what they are.
Yeah, call me, email me, and I'll take care of that before the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Are we good?
Okay, we're good. Thank you, Diana.
Well, move to come out of the Board of Equalization?
No, but we can act on the religious property tax exemptions at this time.
Okay.
So I would make a motion that as a group, that the tax exemption requests for the religious entities be approved.
I will second that.
That's those twenty-three?
Twenty-three, yeah.
Okay, been moved and seconded that we approve the exemptions on the twenty-three religious items on the Board of Equalization matters. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Move to adjourn from the Board of Equalization.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we move from the Board of Equalization. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Very good, thank you, you guys. All right, it is six o'clock. Let's go to item F, public hearing resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-six, opening the Any comments?
Come on, Mike, we've only seen you once, and now you've come twice, we'll hear you again.
Do you have any questions?
Not really, but
By the way, I got a fish this morning, I heard from
Yeah, well, don't repeat it here.
All right.
I wondered if Terrell Warner had a
Terrell?
Yes, Terrell Warner did.
Very good, Terrell, thank you.
So as some of you may be aware, you know, my retirement is a little, not too off, far off, but as some of you may be aware, in December, right before Christmas, I had a stroke. And while I was sitting in the ICU, I thought, I haven't done a really good job of training anybody to take over. So as you're aware, I do the CJC and Victim Services, and we have the on-scene crisis response team as well. So I started talking to John and Tony about, I think I probably need, and I talked to Cameron, about an assistant director in both CJC and Victim Services. I reached out to Amy as well, and I have presented some information with Cameron to have that included in this budget. And the way, I'm going to try to make sure I explain this correctly, I really want an assistant director over CJC and an assistant director for Victim Services. We would like to hire that internally, so I don't have to go out and do a big search, and those people could be working at the CJC as well as being a victim advocate, or working at the Victim Services as an assistant director and being a victim advocate. So it would be kind of a splitting of their jobs as I train them. The reason is, is our VOCA and VAWA grants and our CJC grants are extremely cumbersome. Would you agree, Cameron? They're lovely, and they're a lot of fun, aren't they? We used to do it once a year, they've switched it to being once every other year. There is discussion that VAWA would be once every four years now, which means I only have one or two cycles to train somebody to take over each of those programs. I would not backfill those positions, I would just add those responsibilities, and we would shuffle some responsibilities around, so that there would not be a backfilling of those positions. When I retire, my position, of course, would go away, because we would have a director of the CJC and then a director of Victim Services. The grant funding I receive for VOCA for my job could probably be taken and put into a victim advocate one. So that's just a couple of years away. It's going to be here quicker than I probably am ready, and they're, yeah. So I'm requesting some funding to do that. I don't want to get, I don't want to have another stroke and be in the ICU thinking, oh my gosh, what am I going to do? And I also don't want to have the time go by, as I go into the VAWA cycle this summer, I don't want to have that time go by and not have somebody start learning the grants. Grants are a beast. I don't know another word for it. They can be really difficult. Our state grants are fairly simple, but our federal grants are hundreds of pages. So that's what I am here to talk about.
Very good.
It's been a lovely experience the last couple of months. I feel like my speech is pretty good, but I sometimes, yeah, struggle a little bit, so.
Well, Terrell, the question then is, that is not in the proposal, we would need to amend it to add that in, and we were trying to figure out if that could come out of any of the ARPA money.
We were asking, we talked about it coming out of ARPA because it's public safety, victim advocates are now first responders, but that's up to you to determine.
Well, I'd like to have that discussion, but I, and I've discussed that with Alan, he and I in my office, on regular operations, I don't think that that qualifies for ARPA. We've talked about essential services and community pay, and that is under commercial for regular operations. That is not something, however, I'm hoping I'm looking at funding for, as for proposing that.
How much?
Yeah, how much? What are you looking for?
We had talked about, with the different grants, we're talking like twenty thousand dollars for the rest of the year.
That was twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand, yes. Because we don't know with the increase, I don't think I could figure out the increase, what the benefits would be, the increase in the benefits.
So, and that's for the rest of the year with the continued training next year?
For three years.
For three years.
I would like to step down as the director of the CJC next year, if I could. It was supposed to be a temporary thing. It has worked really well, I think. However, the state isn't so fond of the idea. It makes really good sense to me, and it makes really good sense to others around our community, but the state has not been really sold on the idea of having one person do both jobs.
Okay, all right.
I would like to step down and as the CJC director in a year, get somebody trained. I would still oversee that program, but I think that it would be best to try to step down and give somebody a lot more responsibility there. Victim Services, because Victim Services is over VOCA, VAWA, and all the mental health grants, that's going to take a couple of years of training, because the grants just aren't coming up. VOCA, for example, won't be up until next year, VAWA's in the fall. Mental health, we have some mental health grants. The county is going to be responsible for having a mental health program for first responders. That was passed. We're also tasked with a criminal justice coordinating council. Again, that will not be until next year, but in January, we'll be tasked with those responsibilities that I think could fit very well with Victim Services and an assistant director, eventually a director of that program.
Very good, thank you, Terrell. Are there any more questions or comments for Terrell? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Terrell. All right.
Move to close, oh.
Sorry.
We're still in public hearing.
Okay, yes, thanks, John.
I was going to close it, but
I just want to say, Terrell's talked with me about this, and I don't know if you picked up on the nuance there. She said she's got a couple more years. Couple usually means two. It's not two years, we've got four years. We have four years from Terrell, and we have people at the CJC and in Victim Services who are wonderful and can pick up the day-to-day work of assisting victims and running the CJC. The administrative knowledge, and Terrell's building both of those programs to where they are, to continue that with the grant funding, we don't have anyone ready to step into that. And what, the two facts that have seriously been really kind of feeling to me is, we've only got four years of Terrell, and if we started right now with someone shadowing Terrell and learning how to do the grants, they won't get four rounds of that. As she said, at best they'll get two. We need to have some people trained up to continue the program at an administrative level and getting the grant funding. So I would wholeheartedly endorse Terrell's request.
Great, thank you, John.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we close public hearing on resolution twenty-two, All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, we do not have anything on the front that we missed, correct? Okay, so now we're going to pending action. Pending action, ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-eleven, an ordinance amending Title II of the Cache County Code regarding revenue and finance to bring into harmony with state code and current county practices.
Was that an amended agenda? Because I don't have that on the one I printed out. I just have a blank.
Ten A?
Yeah.
Ten A?
On mine.
Yeah.
On the one I printed out from the iPad. I don't know, maybe I need to refresh.
You have one sitting on your counter when you came in?
Yeah, but I brought my own from home, because I wrote on it.
It's on the one that's on the table.
There's no ten A on the back, yeah.
On the one on the iPad, there's no ten A.
So which one was noticed?
The one that has ten A.
The one that has ten A, okay.
All right.
I would note that the title of the ordinance, the ordinance amending Title III rather than Title II.
Title III instead of Title II, okay.
After our discussion in our meeting, I move that we set another, either a budget or not a budget, a workshop, or create a committee to take further look at this, changes that are needed to Title III.
I think we're premature in deciding that, like, there's still so many questions that it's bringing up, rather than, I think we need to get more details into the ordinance itself. Especially with the new
Especially with the new, uh, law, the new bill, SB 162 or whatever it was, uh.
162.
So, should we kind of straw pull as far as a workshop versus a, a committee or something? Because it does seem, and maybe we can get John's input on this a little bit too, to fairly detail, a lot of detail. And so, a workshop seems to be fairly small.
I think a workshop essentially is a committee, a meeting, a committee.
Very good, thank you.
It's a committee, rather than just a committee of a certain number appointed.
Okay, so, how should I word this? We, Ordinance 2022 dash 11, we will not make a decision on, but move it to a workshop?
Yeah, move it to table it.
We're going to table it, and then we're going to.
Yeah.
It's actually postponed indefinitely, or you can say table it until we have whatever action, but.
Okay.
When, when do you want to have that workshop? On the 12th?
Yeah, we could. If it'll work with, I don't know what else. Barbara, you could probably tell us best what the schedule is, kind of.
Because that's what you would post, when you'd postpone it definitely, you'd postpone it definitely to a specific time. That would be that next, you know, that next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, sir, Janine, did we talk about another workshop on the 12th?
No, but I think there, there are two hearings for Logan Regional Hospital and Beverly Community.
Right.
There's all the tax on the 12th.
Yeah, on the 12th is the tax things.
So, I'm not sure.
We might have to take it further.
Is it the 26th? We got this last one?
Time for the things.
Okay, so I think probably.
Twenty-sixth is open.
Twenty-sixth, okay, let's move it to a workshop on the 26th, or 26th.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
Do we have to have, okay.
Should I remake the motion?
Please do.
I move that we postpone consideration of this ordinance until we have, after we have a workshop on April 26th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we table this item until we have a workshop on 4/26 of 2022. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, 11A, consideration of action, Ordinance 2022 dash 13, Cub River Estates 1 rezoned, an ordinance amending the county zoning map by rezoning 44.46 acres from the agricultural A-10 zone to the rural 5, RU-5, zone.
I have a question on that.
Okay.
How, and Tim, I'm hoping you can tell me, how do the property owners access that property right now? Because it looks like it's being farmed. So how, if they don't build that road at that steep incline, how are they getting onto the property?
Yeah, there's a, my understanding is there's a, um, easement across another property owner to access their separate property.
It's, it's not an easement. He leases the adjacent ground.
That's correct.
It's not, there's no easement. This is his only legitimate access.
Thank you.
The owner.
That's correct.
That's the clarification. I was wondering what that situation is.
There is really no access to it, because it doesn't show on that line that there's a little road off the county road into that property.
Correct, so they, yep.
Counsel, just as a word, uh, the workshop that was scheduled was the same day as you had.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Thank you. Thank you, Jess.
Gives me a chance to play hooky.
Hooky from which, thank.
Yeah.
Both. Neither one of them will know the difference. I'm just out fishing.
That's true.
Your steamer's.
I go down the path. Yeah.
But I, I will be there, so I'd rather, I'd like to move it so that I can take part in this discussion.
So let's move, move it into May.
Yeah. Can we change it to May?
Want to bring it back after this discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead when you're ready, Tim.
Okay, just projecting, and we'll be ready in just a moment. So this is the stretch of frontage where the arrow, uh, points to the slopes, 30% or above, and then the photos of that area where excavation would be required and, uh, re-embankment and sloping for roads and utilities.
That embankment only holds basically the land, which is not semi-flat on top, right? There's no canals, there's no waterways or anything like that. That embankment holds, right?
Correct.
So that embankment could be adjusted, changed, modified, made it where it's passable.
So there was a study done that showed feasible regrading and excavation that could create a, a road that would meet county standards. It's just the county standard of developing steep slopes is the issue, that, um, uh, steep slopes, over 30% are, are not developable in our sensitive lands chapter, and so.
But that's holding hostage everything else, except for that little portion that you could still work through.
And, and that is the issue, is the access to, to develop the property. So I have, what I'm proud of, is a pretty unblemished record of following up with what the Planning Commission decided, but it sounds like that the Planning Commission was pretty on board with the rezon, but for the language. So if I have to blot my.
Record.
Of, impeccable record of supporting the Planning Commission, um, I will do it on this steep slope thing, because everybody knows how much I hate steep slopes. Everybody who thinks, the steep slope language.
You like steep slopes?
No, I hate the, well, I like steep slopes in a lot of ways, but I hate them in the.
Just to ski off of.
Yeah, I got knees that don't like them.
So I'd really like to hear a response on that attorney letter from our planning department. I do not know, however, if that's appropriate right now, or, I don't know, or from our attorney's office.
And I know John always tells us not to do anything on the initial proposals, the way the rules are. We're just kind of talking to bring it back.
But anyway, I'd like to have a response from them about what was said in that letter.
I mean, I'd, I'd like to have more time to read it in depth, and I'd even like to drive out there and look at the property before making, taking the action on it.
My, my initial, when I look, I look at that, and I've driven by that, you know, hundreds of times. And to me, when you say steep slope, anything that I can get up, I can run up in less than three or four seconds is not a steep slope for a fat old man. Okay? That's probably going to be in the paper now, right?
At least he's.
But anyway, but I guess what I'm saying, I'm, I'm going, all that, I, I, doesn't that go back to your, your, uh, when you start doing your, uh, conditional uses, and when you start doing all that stuff, that then they have to modify that slope and make it, where they put a wall, or burn, or do whatever they have to to, you know, to put the infrastructure on all those lots and stuff? I don't know, it just seems like that all comes after, but to condemn a whole property for just that, that little bit, I'm sitting there going, I don't quite understand that.
Yeah, and I, I think there's a couple of points we need to address there. One, you're looking at a rezon, which you have legislative authority to decide whatever you want, as long as it's reasonable. Now, where you're hearing staff's concern is now it's going to come to that backside, the back end of the process, and when they come to get a permit, guess what I have to say? No. Because of that steep slope issue, we're going to enforce the code. So when it comes to, uh, the question that you'll see posed in that letter about hardship relief, that's the council's ability to flex that code. If without the flex in there with that hardship relief, it's a hard no from staff.
Okay, you'll say hard no.
Yes.
But if they can modify that slope?
That's a hard no. So the code states that you don't get to develop those steep slopes. Now, there's some contention that's been raised, or question's been raised by that letter, that staff is happy to address, probably not at this point. Um, I've gone through that and have my stuff that, that we need to review with the attorney to make sure we're on the same page and that I haven't misconstrued anything, and then we can have a better discussion with Catherine, um, about what that might be in with Mr. Davis. And that might help balance out what that, what that looks like. But at the point of, of what's being requested now with the rezon, that's up to you, whatever you want to do. I just, I know down the road it's going to be an issue. They, they practically can, you can engineer that to make it work. That's not the question. The question is, we have to administer the code, and you have to do what the code says. So the Planning Commission recognizes that, and that's why they made the decision they did unanimously, even though they recognize that zone might work there. How do you get past this code requirement without amending the code or allowing hardship relief? And that only happens here. So those two questions are before you, one, the rezon, two, the hardship relief. Does it make sense? And the code's very specific on what qualifies as hardship and what qualifies as hardship relief. So that's where you'll want to get some feedback from staff and probably from council, and hear all those pieces together with the applicant's concerns, and then make your decision.
Chris, what's the process for a hardship relief? I understand that it had to be heard at council, so the Planning Commission couldn't hear it. Is there a specific form to fill out, or is this letter from the attorney qualifies a request for hardship relief?
There's not a formal process that's built into our county process, other than, I think it states, um, I'm trying to remember. I didn't come prepared with that. I think it requires a recommendation from the commission. I'm looking to you, because you've read it recently too, so I'll have to look at that, and then it goes to the county council. That's the one part I don't recall, is if the commission's, a recommendation is required. But it has to come to you. There's not a formal process. It doesn't say how your vote is given as a resolution or an ordinance. It just is a decision. That's all I've got. That's all the code states.
And, and again, well-written letter, good-written letter, and I don't know about the hardship relief, but I know about the steep slope, and I think Planning Commission doing their job, staff's doing their job, given the code that we have and that steep slope, uh, the way the code's currently written is problematic for pieces of land like this. It's funny, this came up, because I was talking to Chris about another one with this same issue as far as a, a rezon and, and how much of the land gets, can be counted as buildable acreage, and I think there's some, there's some problematic, or there's some language in the code that makes situations like this very difficult to handle without having it come before us.
I feel mean, but that's kind of the job, right? Uh, but we're going to administer the code. Uh, Tim pulled this up for me. Here's the requirements for hardship relief, for clarity. I'm going to read it. It's short. Um, if the applicant demonstrates that the regulations imposed by this chapter, this is the sensitive areas chapter, would deny all reasonable use of the subject property, the county council, following the receipt of a recommendation from the Planning Commission, may modify the exercise of these requirements to provide the applicant reasonable use of the property, and may provide a modified determination of development potential. That's a separate thing. Um, that, that gives you the gist of what that requires.
Sounds like that process is already happening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but as in planning and zoning, you define hardship in what is used. It's already being used as farm now, so you wrestle with that. So at point, just like Mr. Borup said, it's the code. So we can't walk over that and then say we address that differently at different times. Um, and that's what the planning and zoning wrestle this for quite a bit of time. I agree, we're putting the applicant at, at delay, but we did approve some property before. Um, I say we need to listen to it and read and just study more on that and see what's going on, so that we don't set precedence of having stepped over ourselves.
Yeah, and to clarify, I don't, I know that's stated in their letter. I, I don't think that we've approved that type of development as described.
Right.
So we can have more of that discussion at a later time and, and give some more details of what that represents, in fairness to that, to the applicant and to the council, so we can have a full discussion about it.
Well, we don't have to act on it tonight.
Is this the council?
Come on up.
Well, she's the chairman.
Yes.
I know that, um, our civil, one of our civil attorneys, Taylor Swenson, met with Chris, and that's the letter today. I've not heard about what the substance of that decision was. I received the letter while we were at this meeting.
Okay.
I've, I've read it briefly, and, and I, um, I think it raises some good points. I don't want to comment on them further until I have a chance to.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Yes, please.
Thank you, Ms. Jolothy. Council members, I just want to address briefly, I mean, we can, I'm happy to talk about the standards of hardship relief and all of that, but that's not actually part of your code, that you need to make any kind of determination about that at this stage, at this rezon application. As staff noted, this is just to decide whether the proposed zone is appropriate for this property, and before the Planning Commission, as reflected in staff's reports, there's been no concerns raised on that issue. And as council member, you correctly noted, you don't decide at a rezoning process whether an applicant that may want to do a conditional use can meet the detrimental effects standards. You, you don't conduct that analysis at this stage. You conduct it at a future stage when that applicant is coming back before you on a conditional use permit process. So I don't think we need to go through the analysis, as my letter has already outlined. We don't believe that ordinance applies to an access problem. It definitely applies in terms of building structures, but it shouldn't apply to access. And what's more, you don't need even to decide at this stage, even if you believe this ordinance applies, you don't need to decide whether this applicant deserves hardship relief right now. All you need to decide is whether this property is, is appropriate for the proposed zone. So that's what we would encourage you to do at this stage.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine.
But if it doesn't have an accen, access, if it's not accessible, then it is a concern. So, you know, we got to be careful before we approve something, that if we haven't determined if it can qualify a hardship thing, then it can be altered to make it accessible. We don't want to say, okay, yeah, we can rezon this, the five, you know, a five-acre rezon, if there's not a, an access to it, that we haven't decided that there is. We've been told that under code, it doesn't have an access. And so it looks to me like we've got a little more work to do, um, with the, the planning and zoning, to make that decision. I'm not going to vote for something that, yeah, okay, when you get on site, it's okay, but you can't get on site with it with the way it is. That's what I'm looking at. But it can't, you know, I agree with, with Councilman Dave here. You can engineer a lot of stuff and make it work.
Gordy, I agree with you, because I think one of the things that was in our pack at the time, that it usually is, as we look at rezones, is this zone must be appropriately served by suitable public roads. And, uh, so I, I question that, right? I mean, they're going to put a public road up in there. Can they do that or not, right? Isn't that the issue?
I'm convinced that it can be done. It's just a matter that we've got to make a determination by an engineer and the county planning, that it can be engineered and it can be done. The attorney says, well, you don't have to do that until you apply for a building permit, but why rezon it if it's not going to qualify for a building permit? The other question I've got, and it's probably in the literature, and I missed it, you've got 41 acres there, and most of that acreage doesn't appear to mean you can build a home on it. How, how do we deal with, how do we deal with that property that hasn't got an ability to build a home on? Do you rezon it, and then you say you can't build a home on it? How do you do that? Do you see what I mean there?
Yeah.
You've got all that, that wasteland on, you know, the top of it, and then to the, to the left of it. I, I'm assuming it's not desirable property to build on. Is that correct, or?
It would develop, it would affect the development potential of the property. So we subtract any wetlands, any open water, any steep slopes. All those come out of that development potential. So if they've got 41 lots and two acres of that is eaten up with that, then they only get three lots out of there.
Yeah.
If it's A-10, right? If they go to RU-2, is that right? RU-2 on this one? Or 5, sorry? RU-5? Then they get to double that amount. So there's just, I don't have the specifics on that, because they're not asking for a subdivision.
Yeah, they're not asking for a subdivision. I'm just looking at a piece of property, 41 acres. It looks like pretty close to half of it, you couldn't put a home on because of the terrain. And so, you know, in the future, that'll have to be discussed, I'm assuming.
Yeah. And that's staff's, staff's concern is, what's, council's already stated, if, if there is not an approval for hardship relief, what purpose does the rezon provide? If they, if they haven't got that, what, what assurance does staff have that this is a good spot for that zone, when there is no adequate access provided, and no evidence that it can be provided? The code doesn't allow for it. Now, if it was just a matter of the code allowing for it, then that's easy. It's just, if it meets the requirements, it's approved. And I think the hurdle to prove that there's no reasonable use of the property is significant. But again, we need to discuss that with council, have a different discussion. I think it's better to bring that back, once it's a little more and more thoroughly vetted. Same with us. We got that. Same with us, we got that letter yesterday. So it's been a pretty quick turnaround to get that to the attorney to then have a discussion. So we needed a couple of weeks.
So Nolan, you're our planning and zoning man, what do you want to do with this? What do you, what do you suggest the council does with this?
There's no doubt that you can engineer that and fix it so a road goes in there. My point, and I believe the planning and zoning's point, is we have an ordinance that we've got to address that allows us to do that. So let's fix the ordinance, then approve this and go. But I don't want to step over that ordinance because they're saying that I'm available to the rezone, but yet we've got an ordinance in front. It's a simple, fix the ordinance, and I don't know if it's simple, but to me, that's the only thing you got to do, then I'm fine with the rezone. But I, I stand fast with the planning and zoning. These guys wrestled with it, we went over a bunch of stuff, they've got good points, and they're right, I mean, we would have approved it, but that ordinance sits in front and they don't want to step over that ordinance, and neither do I.
Nolan, what would you do to change the ordinance?
Address when you can attack those slopes, when it makes sense.
I agree with him after looking at the steep slope stuff. And, and no ordinance is easy to fix. You know, if you make one change, there's always unintended consequences. But it's pretty specific language that I believe with, with a good attorney like we have, we could probably tweak some of that steep slopes language, fix the ordinance pretty quick, and then this goes through, because I'd like to see that changed, not just for this one. I think it will help us as a county to.
Well, yeah, we're going to see it come up more and more.
Now, isn't that what the hardship option is for? Is so that the council can look at this and say this qualifies for a hardship review?
How can a hardship step over an ordinance though?
If it's written in the ordinance, so you refer it to a hardship, so it can come up for review.
But hardship, to me, takes away, I mean, if Chris reads the hardship again, it's pretty definitive that the hardship, he'd basically take away all use of that. There is some agriculture and some other use on there, is my understanding.
I think it's difficult to prove. I think they have a different feel for that, and so I think that's something to be discussed. But it's, it's pretty direct in stating it would deny all reasonable use of the subject property. That is a broad, broad brush.
See, we, we didn't rest easy with that. I mean, that, to me, would be sagebrush and not even hunting. I don't know.
I think ag would certainly qualify, I'm not sure about sagebrush.
All reasonable use, so.
So it looks like there's two options, Nolan, what you're saying, I agree that we should, that, what I'd like to do, and what I think we could do pretty quickly is just change the ordinance, then we don't even have to wrestle with the hardship piece.
Doesn't that have to go to P and Z first because it's a land use?
It would need, may I just say, it would need to. I, like I said, I just got the letter, walking into the meeting and browsing code. I think that perhaps it doesn't require change, but I want to look into that.
And then the other thing I was going to say is hardship use, if we're just looking, and this is the question on hardship, it sounds like if we're just looking at this particular piece of land, that the agriculture use would be taken off the table because the only reason the agriculture use is there with steep slopes is because he's leasing an adjacent piece of land that can access it. If he loses that lease, then he really does have a hardship because he can't get over that steep slope to do the ag piece.
I think a farmer can do about whatever he wants.
Those aren't, those aren't regulations the counties impose.
Yes.
That's, that's the trade-off.
Well, it's interesting, is that we seem to have a, a very, very different standard than most cities have, I guess, don't we? When it comes to slopes.
Smithfield maybe?
No, when River Heights.
The development on that hill.
You know, I've, I've seen 30% slopes that are turned around and because of our engineering skills and because of people that are willing, participants, because of dollars, to invest in that, they've taken 30% slope and terraced it and made it extremely livable and put several homes in through there. And, you know, and make it to where it's safe. And I'm just sitting there going, this looks more just like an access road. To me, it's just, I think that that ordinance is punitive to where it just attack and we're not really seeing the big picture.
So let's fix the ordinance and then we've got it.
Right, we're just, we're like, we're just blanketing something that's just like, oh, we're, we're not supposed to do anything on a 30% slope when it could be, if they're willing to invest in that to make, to secure it and make it right.
It, it could be improved. I don't question that. Yep. All you're getting from staff is we're administering the code.
I know.
And I don't, I'm not, that's not to say it can't be improved.
Well, I just, I think I get the logics of it too.
I agree, yeah.
Madam Chair, I would suggest that we, we table this until we can get it on the agenda and give our attorney, John, some time to look at the code and give us some suggestions as how to make something like this work. I just here talking with Nolan, we're both farmers, we can easy get up that, you know, we can access that. Now, car would take a little more engineering, but I hate to say you got a, you got a piece that's worthless because of the slope that can be altered. So I think we, as a council, should not close the door on this, but allow it to still be in discussion and let Attorney Ruthie dig into it and tell us what we should do with the code.
Well, since it's an initial proposal, do we need to table it or can we just bring it back in two weeks?
I don't think we need to do it.
We can just bring it back.
I'd be ready.
Would you?
We can just leave it and it'll just come back.
Okay.
So does that need to be a motion to move it? Just, just table it and?
It'll, it'll just come back next meeting if we do nothing.
Okay, so we're going to bring this back next meeting, correct?
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
I move to reconsider the date.
Oh, okay.
On item 10A. I move that to May 10th.
Second.
Okay, second. It's been moved and seconded to change the workshop on ordinance number 2022-11 from April 26th to May 14th.
May 10th.
May 10th, I'm sorry, May 10th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Amazing how businesses, business just gets pushed down for months.
Yes. All right, let's move on here. Resolution B 2022-06, a resolution amending the 2022 cash county budget.
I have some questions. On the budget.
Okay.
I remember them actually. The first question was, it looks like it was changed from the last time that we had it before us, and I'm wondering, Cameron, what was changed?
I haven't made any changes.
You haven't made any changes? There was a different number of items and a different dollar amount from last meeting.
So I changed on the day of the last meeting that I was.
We want to hear your singing voice.
No.
There was a change on the day that it was last presented to, and that was with IT. There was, and Bart came up and explained what his change was, but that was, that was the last change that was made. I haven't changed anything since then.
I remember that.
Yeah, I remember that now, thank you. I couldn't figure that out. I also had, see, I had several questions. On item number eight, on the animal shelter appropriating all the unspent funds from 2021 to the tuna $2.8 million, does any of that qualify for ARPA?
No, I don't believe so.
None of it?
No. Especially, ARPA construction, there's, can, construction can qualify, so let's, let's start that way and work backwards. They kind of are putting a high standard on it in two ways. One way is they want to know if that is the best solution for the money that you're given, what were the other options that you were going to do with that money? CARES Act was much easier to just say, this is addressing the pandemic, we're going to, we're going to use it. ARPA funding, it is hard to say. And a second point is, even if we say a building can qualify and it is the, the best use, given all the possible alternatives, when we're talking about an animal impound, it's hard to make the case that we're impounding these animals because that's a response to COVID. So that, that's where we really had a hard time justifying any expenditure related to this facility.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense, yeah.
I had a couple others. Thanks for your patience here. Let's see, what was it? Okay, on item number 25, having to do with mid-sized excavator, and perhaps I got this information wrong, but wasn't that something that was purchased last year or not picked up until this year?
That's not my understanding, but I don't, does Matt want to speak to that? Yeah.
Did I hear that correctly? I'm wondering, I guess my, my bottom line is, is that should be that a PO carryover?
This is, this budget item is to just make correction. In the past, the road department has not quite done correctly, so instead of making a revenue line item for their trade-in, they would just put the money in there for what the difference was. So this is a correction to make sure that we've put the sale of capital assets in there so that we can capitalize that whole cost of the excavator. The additional $54,000 is for the price increase. So the $70,000 is to true up the revenue side of things for what that trade-in value will be on the equipment they're trading in.
Who's that?
And it has not been purchased yet. No.
Okay. On the, on item 36, the payroll increases, we didn't already do that for this year? Okay.
Can I tag on while you're talking about payroll?
Yeah, please.
A question I had on payroll, Cameron, is it seems like most of these, most of these payroll changes, as I understand them, are coming out of that compensation reserve that we did, and then we're just now taking them out of that general compensation reserve bucket and allocating them to the correct line and to the correct department.
Yes.
And almost all of that's coming out from compensation reserve, but not all of it.
Right.
And we still have, after all those changes, it looks like about $180,900 left over in the compensation reserve bucket after all these have been done. And then some of it is coming out of appropriated fund balance rather than compensation reserve. So I just wanted to know why the difference.
Yeah. So, so I tried to clarify that at our last meeting, and I'll try again this time. So the budgeted number in compensation reserve was the number that was provided to us by the compensation committee when we went through workshop, we went through a few workshops and they said, this is how much these increases will cost, those are the cost estimates. So in the budget, that, that just took a big picture from the compensation committee and said, here's, here's the whole picture. So in the budget, then I was trying to estimate, okay, if, if that's going to employees, which fund are those employees paid for? Some, a lot are in the general fund, some are in the other funds, and I was estimating where that was going to come from. So in the funds that, for example, tax administration fund has 64,800 coming as a use of fund balance, that was just on my estimation of where, where should that be coming from. But the total, the total reappropriation is actually a little bit less than, than what the total budget of compensation reserve from. It just depends on which fund that it have to come from because of where the employees actually are paid for from. Does that make sense?
It does. And so one more clarifying question for some of those funds and where they come from.
Yeah.
You've got, some of them, depends on the department, are coming from appropriated fund balance.
Yes.
And then there's an appropriated fund balance dash MSF. What is MSF?
Oh, that's municipal services fund, and that's distinguishing it for me as compared to Class B road funds. They're both in the same fund. Usually there's only one of those accounts in each fund, but in this, in that case, there's two. So that's, that's just distinguishing that it's not from the restricted Class B road funds.
Cameron, on number 11, the Rosenbauer structure engine, that's not a carryover either?
No, that one's, that one's, there's a little twist on that one, if I remember calling that, that's the 325,000, is that correct? Yes. So that one, there, there is a PO at play, but it doesn't directly go to the engine that we're trying to purchase. So, and I don't know if Rod wants to speak more to this, but we're kind of having to do a little switcheroo so we can get an engine is, is the issue.
They're hard to come by.
Apparently.
So that engine was ordered in January of last year, and I was told it wouldn't be available until 2024. So we talked to a different vendor who's going to provide one this year, and then Rosenbauer also agreed to provide one this year. So we had one in the budget for 2022. So the 2021 is, I just need to pull that into 2022 to pay for a different one than we ordered, but from the same vendor. So one that's available rather than a custom-made one.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Counsel?
If we're just asking general questions, there's, I probably would like to make some motions very specific to certain.
I'm done asking questions, thank you.
Line items, so.
Was it in mine?
Just, just a question I had, and Cameron, maybe you can help me with this. Basically, you start on item 78, 79, let me get it here and increase it so I can see it. It looks like 78, 79 through 83, we've got some funds coming from the fund balance that seem to me to be very similar to what we award RAPS funding for.
Okay.
I'm wondering, not that they're not worthy items to fund, but it's interesting that we're funding them out of the fund balance rather than RAPS funding.
Right, so these actually are coming from the visitors bureau, transient room tax. And so that tax has very similar eligible uses as a restaurant tax or a RAPS tax, depending, and RAPS tax is a little more restrictive, but restaurant tax and transient room tax are very similar. Do you have a comment?
But is it coming out of, see, this is what I think is, to me, shell game, is that in the RAPS, the visitor bureau will make a RAPS application.
Yeah.
They'll get allocated a certain amount, and if for some reason, then they kind of take that and do them as grants?
So, in some ways.
Entities that, and I sit there and go, we already gave them money, we already gave them money, and all of a sudden, but we didn't give them all their money, but is this how they get all their money, is via visitor's bureau?
Well, so, and that's actually outside, because I'm not on that committee and I don't know, but there are entities that are receiving both monies from a restaurant or a RAPS tax and monies from the visitor's bureau, if that is correct. These, these particularly are, are PO carryovers. So these budget had been approved last year, purchasers or awards had been made last year, and so, but they weren't finished or completed, and so that's actually what these are in this case, is, is trying to carry forward those funds related to those purchase orders that had been approved.
Dave, if you're concerned about that, then you might want to look at number, I remember which one it was, it was $25,000 to the visitor's bureau, because sometimes they have things that come up like this and they want to fund them, but it's not close enough time to a budget opening because the event will be done, and so they're asking for 25,000, I think it's 25, or is it 20?
Yeah, it was 25, I remember.
Kind of just have there as a fund that they can use to fill these grants. I honestly, even though I sit on that board, just, I don't vote, I'm just there to answer questions. I feel a little uncomfortable with that, I'd rather have it be less. I see the need there that things come up like that, but things come up for everybody and, you know, so I can't remember what number that is. Cameron, maybe you?
Yeah, I'm looking for that quick.
I guess one question I have in my mind is, we as a.
I have it as number 29. If you have that other original pronouncing, it might be 28.
28.
Yeah. Sorry.
And we as the county council are the ones that oversees the tax money and we oversee the spending of it. And I guess if this is presented to us now, we do have the right to decide, this is not, this is not what we want to do, is to have them submit for RAPS, and then if they don't get enough, they submit somewhere else because we control that money too. And we have to, as county councilmen, decide, county councilwomen, decide if that's the way we want the county to be funded. So I don't know if that is something that we could consider in these and say, maybe and maybe not. I don't know. Dave, you brought that up to me a long time ago. Dave, you brought that up to me a long time ago.
On number four, how many employees are we increasing there? Or are we just taking it from seasonal to part-time, part-time to full-time?
Yeah, so on seasoned employees, it could be a number. I don't actually have a proposal for a specific amount. That dollar amount could go to ten seasonal employees, or it could all go to one seasonal employee, but I don't know that.
My question digs a little deeper on that. I would like to know if we have a static level of employees in the county, but we're hearing in this budget opening, other positions they want. Is there a way, maybe this has to go to Amy, I think I would like to know how many new positions are coming each year that we're not hearing that I think has a bite into the budget? Does that make sense? I mean, not just the seasonal, but I don't know how many positions are added on during the year that we're not seeing. And I'd like to know that to keep what the static level is. And okay, in the last year, we've added five new positions, and this is what they were, this is the salary. I would like to see that.
Yeah, and that can be presented.
Meaning there was another position added for a policy analyst not too long ago. Like, where did that come from or what's going on there? I'd just like to see more involvement onto that, if that's possible. Anybody else have any thoughts there?
I think it would be good because when we were doing some stuff, and Amy was fantastic in providing me some information when I asked about it. But if you look at number four and you look at that office over the course of several years, there's been a huge increase in not seasonal staff, but permanent staff.
Yeah.
Already.
It is hard when it's just March and we're already having requests for new staff. To me, I think, well, we should have got that already from the budget we just got done doing a couple months ago. And certainly there are some extenuating circumstances sometimes, but overall, it's hard for me in March to think, how come you guys didn't recognize that when you were putting the budget together? Maybe that's just me.
And then I noticed on number six, that hundred grand. What, what budget is that? What is, tell me the name of that budget, am I reading right? That they want a hundred grand in it?
So that is for the recorder's office. That one.
But what's the name of it? Professional and technical?
Professional and technical.
Boy, that's a very fluid. But that thing just hops around, jumps all over the place. Is that one that we can just use for anything?
No, no. That is, that is for professional services.
It seems like you have a blanket, it gets used a little bit from here and here and there and everyone. I just, I'd like to know what the heck that professional and technical really means.
So.
A hundred grand in that tells me, wow, there's a way to maybe finance a lot of different things.
No, so professional service is actually a pretty recognized category of expense, whether it's government or even in private sector. Attorneys, lawyers, doctors, accountants, such consultants would come out of professional and technical. In this case, there's a contract request for digitizing our records. And this, this actually is ARPA-funded, or it's not funded, I was going to say. Eligible is the word I'm looking for. This, this could be funded from, from ARPA funding. But, so the professional service here is being able to provide a service to the county in those digitizing of those records. Now, we could say that could be, rather, if you didn't like that being qualified as a professional or a technical service, but I think technical is probably where that's picking up. Then you have other places where you would say, well, there's miscellaneous services, but that's, that's actually more where you would build out something like that, right? So this actually was more specific than a miscellaneous service.
So I was kind of looking at that, and one of the things that, that I thought about, you know, saying it was approved by the budget committee. But I wanted to talk about it a little bit because I always look at it and say, you know, we can hire a consultant to do stuff for us. But as soon as we're done, the consultant takes the experience. You know, we get the product, but they take the experience and know-how and walk out the door. And if we need to do something again, we don't have it. If there's a way for a couple offices to work together and we fund it within the county, and then once that project's over, we retain that knowledge and experience that then we can redeploy to another county department, G I S or something like that, for example, for people that were on the budget committee, did we discuss that?
I think, in our, in our budget committee, I was thinking maybe we had discussed an option of G I S, but I was thinking they had zeroed in on saying we need additional people. And then if you brought in additional people, ARPA funding can still fund this project, but then that funding goes away, and then you have a funding issue with additional personnel.
Which is true, which I'm just looking at, and Chris wasn't the director at the time, but I believe Josh was. And Josh gave up, I think they've been running pretty lean in their department. For a quiet while, if I'm tracking our employees. And would this be an opportunity to kind of do some cross-training? Build that special project? And then at the end of it, rather than a consultant just leaving and we got no institutional knowledge, we can redeploy.
Do we have some equipment though to scan these?
No, I think they're bringing equipment, but Devron could speak more to that project than I can, if that's okay.
Please come forward, Devron.
Yeah, this particular proposal has nothing to do with the mapping and the other issue that we talked about with contracting out the work. This is just for a company that their sole purpose and what they do is they come in, they will run a crew twenty-four seven in our office, they will take the old books, they know how to handle them, they know how to properly preserve them while they go through this process. They have specialized equipment that they bring in, that they come in and they image every single page for us.
So this is just low-level, we're just scanning.
This is just.
You hire a high schooler to do it, almost, but they need to know how to.
Yeah, they, it's, it's more than that, though, and it's just scanning, but the product that they give us is phenomenal. They go back to their lab after they've taken all the digital images. They make sure they're all legible, they make sure that they're all to the right skew and that they're good quality, and they index them for us. They put them in the folders we need them in so we can immediately then serve them out to the public and make them available online. It's something that would take us in-house years and years.
And this is highly requested by, I know a lot of title companies, right?
Yeah.
They, they're quite interested.
Yeah, I've got six endorsement letters for this specific project from six different title companies. One from Logan City, one from an engineering firm. There's a lot of people that would like to see these records get online quickly.
So this then is, if I'm hearing you right, this is just scanning. This isn't us going to lose some mapping and that kind of stuff.
And I'm.
This is just scanning and digitizing.
And it's just for this project. If there's any money left over from this project, I'm not using it for anything else. It's just this project to image these documents.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devron, thank you.
Yeah, going back to what Councilwoman Burrup said about having people come in and help us, and they're, they're, they're not hired except for a certain time. If you look at number one that Mike presented to us, the public defender's office, they want fifty thousand dollars in order that they can expedite a whole bunch of backlog and trials. And so whichever public defender they decide to bring in, there is a possibility of that he's really, really, really good, and we need another, another employee, that would be a good place to look, because we've already had experience with him. The only heartburn I have with this fifty thousand, and I told Mike when he first called me, is the fact that we had fifty thousand in the kitty and it was given in a different direction. And then three months later, they come and want another fifty thousand. And I thought, now wait a minute, why did we give the one fifty thousand to an area when we probably knew that we were looking for, you know, a public defender to help us? Why wasn't, why did we give that up when we should have just held that in reserve until we could fund Mike's proposal? So that's the only challenge I have with that, is it's probably needed, it's probably merits it, but I'm not sure we used the money as wisely as we should have.
Cameron, can we take that fifty out of ARPA? Because isn't the reason is we need it for the backlog caused by COVID? There's a direct correlation with COVID, isn't there, Mike?
Yes, I agree with that one. That one is definitely related.
That one, I believe, we could amend that one. I, I still would want to take a good look at it, but that one, I think, yes, I, I'm, I'm would. I want a further review to be a hundred percent sure, but I'm ninety percent sure, let's say that. I think that could come from ARPA funding.
So for, so for a motion on something like that, if we just wanted to make a motion on number one, because it sounds like we want to fund that fifty, we would do it based on looking to make sure that we could access ARPA funding and, and if we can, fund it out of ARPA rather than the use of fund balance. And if not, it'll just default back to fund balance because you did everything you could to get it out of that big pot of gold that the federal, federal skies created out of nothing.
I think it's fool's gold.
I have just one more question, and I think, number eighteen. This is appropriation for assistance and advice to lobby for county interests. Lobbying means, for usually legislatures, legislative action. Okay? And I wish, I wish our executive Zook here was to answer this.
He had an emergency that he had to sleep for.
But I'm, my question is, is why would we put that into the executive budget? And maybe not the council budget, which is the legislative branch?
Well, I have a question about that in the first place anyway. Why are we, why do we need to hire a lobbyist?
Isn't that why we hired a chief deputy executive?
An executive assistant so that the executive could spend more time working with the legislature. So I, I'm, I'm really not in favor of that line item at all.
I, I think the, well, I think the lobbyists should be working for the council.
Yep.
You know, in other words, they're going down and they're, they're working with the legislation, the legislative arm for us. Now, when the executive goes down, I don't know, he's, he's kind of been on his, just on his own and just kind of been doing a little bit of everything, but you go, he's going and basically lobbying for the county, but as an executive, but not as, not as part of, we aren't sending him from the legislative arm of the government in Cache County.
Dave, we need a written policy that says that legislative positions will be made by the county council and that other elected officials can speak on those kind of issues, but need to make clear that they are not carrying the official position of the county, then that only the official position comes from the county council.
And to that point, and I spent a lot of time thinking about the council that we received from, from John a couple meetings ago, the twenty-second, and, and had some, some discussions with him today that were, I thought, very productive. And I really appreciated his, his insights. I think we've got a lot of, there's a lot of things to, to balance here. But to your Councilwoman Erickson's point and Councilwoman Worthland's point, you know, each, each executive has their executive powers that are, that they can do and they can lobby. But I would love to see, as a county, the ability to have a lot more collaboration and clarity and transparency so that when we approach the legislature as Cache County, the county itself, the entity, as to what we want to lobby for, I think engaging a lobbying firm, and it's, it's a great lobbying firm. But I would love for that to be kind of under the auspices in some way of the council. Because that gets to Carl's point, right? We, for the executive to go down and do the executive function, which the executive can absolutely go down and lobby. We funded a deputy exec, chief executive position to allow him to do that. But that kind of leaves the council hanging out here by ourselves as part-time council people without a lot of support. So being able to engage that firm to lobby on behalf of the county and be able to, to really have a place where everybody can come together and collaborate, that we're going to do it as a county, because John can go down lobby on behalf of the attorney's office or what they need. Kathleen can go down as far as the assessor and so on. Sheriff can go down and do the wonderful work that he's been doing. But if we want the county to do it as the county, it'd be great to have that firm funded and have the council have a little more input into that. And hopefully I didn't completely mangle what you tried to convey to me today, John, with that, and.
I think the key point from my perspective of what you just said is that, that there's more nuance that needs to be discussed, and you're not taking action tonight as a, as a policy or whatever, you're talking about a budget item. But I'd be happy to talk about that nuance that you and I talked about and flesh it out.
Most of these legislative items that we would, we would like the lobbyists to go down and work with usually do hold some purse string somewhere. And to make promises or to make, to say, hey, this is our stance, executive can't do that. You can't make financial promises because that's, that's the legislative body. That's the council's, you know, responsibility to do that. And so that's why I'm, I'm saying that that, that portion there in funding them, I guess that's the remaining contract that was, that was signed.
Eight months of the contract, yeah.
That, I would dare say that that ought to be put over into the councils, that you, they don't budget, and that we work through them, and, and that's how we legislate on a state level.
So, so if we did that, Dave, that's number eighteen, and I'm going to make a motion to do that, and this will be the motion. I'd make a motion that we, well, before I do that, here's one other little bit of a nuance. So we have a current contract in place with, with Lincoln Hill that, if I understand that contract correctly, started February first. And so we're February first, we're into March now.
I have it starting January first.
January first?
Yeah, the invoice I received was for January through March.
January through March.
Yeah.
So we gave the fifty thousand from the attorney's office, and that's where my heartburn comes, which is the fifty thousand that we discussed a month ago. And then there's an additional thirty-six.
Now, I, I.
Okay, so.
Let me, let me look at their invoice, just.
Check that invoice real quick, because I want to make sure we do this kind of right, the way that I set this up budget-wise.
I thought the total was like forty-eight, wasn't it, for the whole year?
It's forty-five a month.
Forty-five hundred a month.
Forty-five.
So I just need to know if it started.
So their, their invoice says lobbying and consulting services, January, February, March, twenty-twenty-two, forty-five hundred a month. So that's thirteen.
So we got three months already, and in that contract, we got a thirty-day cancel. So that will be April, so we got four months, right?
Yeah, if you were to counsel, very soon.
Months at forty-five hundred, because I want to get this right, four months, forty-five hundred, eighteen thousand. Because what I would love to do, and this gets to a lot of the details that we'll have to work through, is I'd love to take that current contract, give a notice of cancellation for that current contract so everybody's really clear that the next contract we sign is a contract signed on behalf of how we want to do things collaboratively as a council, and we're going to fund it out of the council. So we pay the money that we had for that current contract, sunset that one, go to Lincoln Hill and say, we're done with this contract, and we're going to re-sign a contract starting May first that we fund from the council's budget and work with John and everybody to have a Cache County as a total entity, everybody working together, talking together, lobbying.
Paul, can there be, if we're counseling that, can we have a report to see what evidence or benefit we did from that contract for those three or four months? That gets reported to the council?
I think it'd be great for the executive to be, yeah, report that to us.
I think it should.
There's got to be a written report on what they did with the money.
For paying them eighteen grand, I'd like to see what I got out of it, if there was validation of having that contract.
Okay, yes. So I think we ask for that. The other thing I want to ask the council on what you'd feel like the motion should be, and, and maybe get John's input into this as well. Because I know you committed to have some of it coming out of your professional and technical line, which is a fun line, we get to deal with all the time. Should we leave eighteen thousand dollars in the executive, or seventeen thousand dollars in the executive's professional and technical because he already has a thousand in there? So we can then fund him seventeen thousand, you wouldn't have to pay for it out of yours. We budget into the executives, pay the eighteen thousand out of the executives because he was the one that really did this, and then have everything else go over to the council's budget.
I think we should just take it out of the council's budget from now on so there's no misunderstanding of what that money in the executive's budget is for.
I'm, although I'm still wondering why in the world we need a lobbyist when we hired somebody.
The one thing that we.
A lot of the executive roles, so to give the executive time to be down there representing. there representing the county, including the council, and, and doing that.
That's what I was gonna add on to what you were just saying, is we, we now hired Dirk that, that we didn't have because of Bryce's sad situation, but now we've got Dirk, and Dirk can go down, or, or Executive Zook can go down there.
So, and, and point well taken. My question would be, how much lobbying got done in Salt Lake? Because it appears to be a significant amount that was done on behalf of the council with your knowledge. I, I think it's close to zero, and that is, that is my concern. And to John's point earlier, that if there's a vacuum, somebody's gonna step in and fill it, and I think as a council, we should not allow that vacuum to exist, that someone steps in and fills, because it would be great for the executive to be able to go down and lobby in conjunction with the council, but recent history's shown, we didn't get that.
I, I think it's time for the council to start getting some of its own advisors that answer to us, that we can count on. And I think a lobbying firm, and these guys are the best, I will say that, I would love to have their help and help them, have them help keep the council up to speed on things that, that are going on. Yes, we have UAC, we've worked through UAC, UAC's great, but a lot of the counties still have their own lobbying firms even on top of that, and I, I think that Cache County's gonna be missing out if we don't. And if we're gonna get somebody, I want to get the best, and I, I want to have these guys working for the council, being able to advise us and help us out, especially that we are a part-time council, we need to be able to rely on somebody.
Well, we, we had better than be pretty specific about what it is we need them to lobby for. I mean, we, we see, we're without any clear direction of what it is we need from the state legislature. And so hiring a lobby firm to go down and lobby for us when we don't even know what we need their help in lobbying for is, is kind of a ludicrous action.
Sometimes it's lobbying against it to say no. A lot of times, the biggest things you do is get people to stop bills.
Well, I know, but we need to be specific about what bills we're talking about.
Well, you know that specific, what we can plan on at the beginning of the session? Two weeks later, you go, holy crap, you know, what, what's just happened?
Yeah.
Because you get, you know, five hundred changes to different things, and you're in a different playing field all of a sudden within like two weeks. And then another couple days later, here you go again. And, you know, and for, for us to keep up with a lot of that stuff, you know, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying, that's what a lobbyist firm does, is they keep you up, hey, this is how it's gonna affect your county, this is how it's gonna affect, you know, are we coming together? That's what they relay back and forth to us as a council, so that we can make those decisions and how we stand.
Right. I agree with you, Dave, because the lobbyist, it's not us to tell them what to do or what's going on down there so much, it's them keeping us informed of what is going on down there and how, like you said, it affects us.
And, and how, and then we give direction on how they can influence...
Exactly.
...the game changers down there.
Right.
So basically, we're saying that the money we've spent for an executive and the chief deputy hasn't been reporting back to us on what's going on in the legislature, right?
Correct.
Pretty much.
But one thing we gotta remember, and that is, is when we needed some help with the Snyder bill, we did have someone in place to help us. That was a positive.
I helped with that, so did Dave.
Sure, sure you did, but you don't, you know, I'm just saying that it was helpful that they were there.
The lobbyist firm.
Yeah, they helped with that, for sure.
And they did help, they really, they did.
That's what I'm saying, it wasn't a loss.
You're so right. You're so right. So, Carl, I...
Can I just make, answer your question of Paul's and then make one other comment or two? One was, would you like, would I like to see all of what's happened so far paid for out of the executive's budget? I, I committed to, to fund the lobbyists through the session, which would be through, my understanding, March. So I'm, I'm happy to have that come out of my budget. I don't mind having that money in my budget, but I, I'll stand behind that commitment. Three months worth of money coming out of my budget. The other thing that I'd just say, in preview to the nuance, is, in saying this with, with real desire that it be viewed as a council and an executive and not as David Zook and individuals. Lobbying the state legislature is not a legislative function for the county council. Legislative, when it talks about that the county council has all of the legislative powers of the county, that means that only the county council can pass ordinances for the legislature, for the county, can do countywide policies. As I often do in these meetings, I say, look to the federal system or the state system. It is not the function of the Speaker of the House to go to the United Nations. It is not the function of the President of the Senate to represent the US in treaty negotiations. Advocating for an entity at the next level or outside the entity isn't a, is typically an executive function. So advocating the county's position at the state level is an executive function. And I think that it ought to be exercised with full discussion, collaboration, advice, and to the extent possible, moving forward in a unified way with full reporting. But some of that nuance is, if the council wants to hire a lobbyist, we need to track down the answer of number one, can the council direct that effort? That's an administrative executive function. And if the council's wanting to appropriate money, and Paul and I talked about this today, for a contract with a lobbyist, the state code expressly says it's the executive that negotiates and signs contracts. And so I haven't spoken with David about any of this, Paul and I talked about it first, but you can see a real logjam if you appropriate money and then the executive says, well, if that's not a contract I'm gonna sign, then we just have more problems.
John, I have a couple things on that. Our code allows the council to hire any, anybody it wants to advise us. Second, the Salt Lake County Council, they take positions on bills, as is their power, and they're, they don't have a written code, because I checked with one of my friends that's a council member there, but their order, what they do things is, the county's position comes from the council, and that's why I said what I did. And the other elected officials are, are free to discuss and to, to make comments in public on any bills, but they have to make clear that it's their opinion and not that of the council. And so I, I think that they've already got that figured out, and I believe the council can lobby and represent its own interests and the interests of the county, because we are the policymaking body. Especially, I don't know, we've had issues with the, I'm just gonna be blunt, we've had issues with the executive not communicating with the council. Let me tell you, it was not the funnest thing I had to do to go down there and tell the legislature, hey, the council knows nothing about this, please don't give us any... I don't want to see that happen again. And, and so as far as contracts, I know that that's what it says, but our code also allows us to hire people. I don't know how, how you figure that out, but if we can hire people, then that, maybe that takes precedence over that, I don't know.
And I think there, that there's a difference between hiring, because that implies an employee versus contracts are to be signed by an executive.
Contracting, yeah, whatever it is.
This is just what I'm talking about. I'm, I'm not saying that the council can't take positions on legislation at the state level and all of those things. I'm just emphasizing with that, those couple of thoughts, what I, what Paul has said and that I have said, that there are nuances that do need to be worked out. And my desire is that they get worked out so, in a way, ahead of time to, so that there's a better understanding going forward than there has been in the past.
See, and that's interesting, because here we go, they make laws that come down to us, and we have to take portions of those and distribute them in ordinances that we have, and then we have to change all those ordinances. I'm going, I, to me, they go together, that's, we gotta know what's happening there, and we gotta be able to push what's happening there.
I, I agree. I, I'm just kind of saying the same thing that Chris said at the podium, which is, I agree with this idea, but we've gotta make sure we aren't stepping over code to get there. And so let's address the nuances and make sure that we're not stepping over code to get there.
So John, would it be fair to say, listening after our discussion today and listen to you right now, that there's still lots and lots of work to do, just making a motion for the funding doesn't...
Exactly.
...doesn't solve this at all? But taking the action of funding it under the council at least signals that this is the direction we're wanting to move in, and we would love to work collaboratively with all executive heads, the sheriff, the, so, everybody else, to set something for the council. We got a lot of work to do, but by taking the funding step, we're at least signaling what, as a council, we want to set as a policy and a procedure for Cache County.
I think that's well said.
Okay.
John, I think that when you go down and you speak in behalf of the attorneys, if you speak and three or four other people reinforce what you've said down there and are influential in talking to all of them, I'm going, I think this is a win-win for all of us to get what, you know, things changed that are beneficial to Cache County.
Yeah, I agree.
So...
So, then, then my motion, because John says he's gonna take the thirteen thousand five hundred out of his budget, the basically three months that he committed to, that should pretty much take care of the outstanding contract, there'll still be thirty days left, but we're gonna take this, number eighteen, for the remainder of the year. Let's see this.
There's a gap, by the way, then?
Of one month.
Of one month, yes.
Yes, there's a gap of one month. So how about, so it's gonna be a three-part motion.
Thirty-five hundred.
Okay.
Forty-five hundred.
Three-part motion, so four months, eight months, at forty-five hundred?
That's the...
Okay, here's, here's my motion. I would make a motion that we take thirty-six thousand dollars out of the appropriated fund balance, like is in number eighteen, account one hundred dash thirty-eight dash nine thousand. We take that thirty-six thousand dollars and we move it to professional and technical under the council's professional and technical, one hundred dash four one one two dash three ten. So then the council has thirty-six thousand dollars to fund a new contract for Lincoln Hill starting May first.
Okay.
That leaves the eighteen thousand dollars that is owed, thirteen thousand five hundred of which goes, comes from John. The executive should have a thousand dollars in his professional and technical budget, so we take the additional thirty-five hundred bucks out of the appropriated fund balance, give it to the executive's professional and technical, so that he can pay April's thirty days cancellation to Lincoln Hill, which they will then have received their full payment through April. That contract will be done, and a new contract will be signed May first, funded out of the council, with a lot of work to do to make sure that's right. Sorry, Barb, but that's a big, long motion for you to repeat.
What John said, or what Paul said.
I want you to repeat that off.
Yeah.
I think I could do it again, so we're...
Okay, never mind. All right. Paul has submitted a, an amendment?
Just a motion to approve that particular, one piece of the budget, and we can look at the rest of it.
A motion to amend that one portion of the budget. Is there, do I hear a second on it?
I will second that, and in doing so, I will also state that I still disagree with the way this was done from the, in the first, and by seconding, I, that does not mean my approval of this coming out of the attorney's budget, but I will second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a amendment?
Okay.
Make a motion to amend by addition, adding in from the general fund twenty-five thousand dollars for victim services to fund an assistant director of the CJC and an assistant director of victim services.
Okay. I'll second it.
It's been proposed and seconded that we amend which one?
It's not on there, we're adding it.
Okay, okay, we're adding it to the CJC twenty-five thousand, correct?
Yeah, twenty-five thousand dollars for an assistant director of the CJC and assistant director of victim services.
An assistant director of victim services, both twenty-five thousand apiece. All in, all approved?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't think it was twenty-five thousand apiece, what is Terrell's doing here?
I'm here.
It wasn't twenty-five thousand apiece, right? It was, I think the additional amount was twenty-five, well...
I have twenty-five thousand.
She said twenty-five thousand to me.
Yeah, and that's what I have.
Did you have what?
She said it was twenty-five thousand.
Which then helps you for the remaining of the year.
Yeah, the remainder of the year.
Right.
For, for the, I was thinking that was the total.
Question is whether or not it's total or each one.
Yeah, that's true.
So you wanted twenty-five each, is what your daughter wanted?
Twenty-five thousand each, okay, that's what I understood, yeah.
So we're talking fifty thousand, am I, am I getting behind? I thought it was twenty-five for the two of them.
That public defender's gonna go without food here shortly if we're not careful.
Well, on that note, I will make a motion to amend number one, on the budget, on the accounting side, instead of coming out of the general fund, to first prioritize and take the fifty thousand dollars on the public defender out of ARPA, if that's possible.
I'll second that.
Okay.
But it's still approved if not.
And, right, and if not, come out of the general fund.
But, okay, yeah, and I think that's not...
Doesn't we want a darn good reason?
Okay.
Okay, we've moved and seconded that the, if that does, that it comes out of ARPA first, and if it doesn't work, then we'll take it from the general fund. Okay, all in agreement?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you.
I know, I thought we were done asking questions, but I do have one more, and since Matt's still here, I need him to wake up and participate in the... On number sixty-two, one of the things that I had a question on, it looks like some of this stuff gets, the road department gets picked on a little bit, it looks like we're taking seventy-two thousand three hundred out of roads and moving it into my favorite, professional and technical, keeps popping up, professional and technical zoning. I just want to understand why money would be coming from roads into, into zoning, and it's probably legit, but I just want to make sure Matt has enough. Potholes are a good thing to fill.
It's a, it's a long walk to ask the same question, that I don't know why it says roads PO. That's a question I was gonna ask Cameron, because that has nothing to do with the Public Works Department.
I'm watching out for you. I want to make sure you got your money.
I'll review that. This came to me, and it's just on there, is where the PO is from, so if that's, if that's not appropriate from roads, it will go to that MSF account instead.
Glad you caught that problem.
Yeah, good to have a look at everything close.
There's a lot, there's a few more of those, too.
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll watch for all of them, yeah, thanks, Matt.
I did, I mean, I did see that one, that was, I think that was the biggest line item, but there are a few of those that say roads PO rather than so.
And I'll communicate back what I found out from review, so that when this comes for vote, we're all clear on where it's going to be coming from.
Will that be on Thursday's meeting, or for the budget, huh?
Is, that, that one's about ARPA review still, I think.
Okay, sorry, thank you, all right. All right, any other questions, any other concerns on budget?
Oh, we're having so much fun.
Let's move on, yeah, let's move on, let's move on.
Well, let's see, do we want to wait to approve the budget until these amendments are made?
Cameron, do you want to make those changes before we approve the budget to make sure it all ends up...
Yeah, and I think we're on initial consideration, so I, I wasn't sure if I was anticipating a vote tonight or not, so...
Yeah, I mean, we could act on it, we've acted on a few pieces of it already, well...
Yeah, if you want to, or, I mean, I'm comfortable either way, so that's gonna be up to you. I, I can make these, I've made notes on these changes, and I can distribute that so that we're all on the same page before I import, but you can, you can make that motion. but you can, you can make that motion.
Okay, so we'll just wait for the rest of the language. And we can include the ones we've already passed here tonight, yeah.
Yeah, I'll update those. Okay, thank you.
All right, we got, we're straight on all of that. Okay, Resolution C twenty-two twenty-two dash zero seven, a resolution declaring county interest in real property located on Wolfpack Way, described as parcel number zero-four dash zero-five-eight dash zero-zero-four-eight as surplus, surplus property.
Move to.
Go ahead, Dave.
Move to waive the rules?
Can we waive the rules, John?
Approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash oh seven and twenty-two twenty-two dash oh eight.
Second.
Okay, it's been.
Cause it's all, it's, they're waiting and it's getting held.
It's been moved and seconded that we waive the rules and approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero seven and Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. All right, Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero nine, a resolution to amend the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, Section Nine, Employee Benefits in Regards to Firefighter Special and PLT Accrual Rates. Chief Hammond.
Yeah, so this one was brought to Councilwoman Worthing's attention from our firefighters. Our firefighters work two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six hours of regular pay a year compared to two thousand eighty for our regular employees. Regular employees begin accruing vacation to the extent of eighteen days per year. When the firefighters take a day off, it takes twenty-four hours of vacation time for one day off. So essentially, they get off, they get, they get three sets, or because they work forty-eight hours in a row, they get three sets a year, so essentially, three groupings a year of time off. So what we've discussed in ordinance review and in compensation committee was that those firefighters that are working the forty-eight ninety-six will accrue vacation and special leave time at the same hourly rate as the, as all the other employees. This actually affects nine employees that are on this scale right now.
This brings everybody on the same playing field across the board. I think it's been worked out diligently, and I think it's fair.
I do too.
And therefore, I move to waive the rules and approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-two oh nine.
I second.
I was just gonna say, Thami and Chief ran on it. I'll second that.
I wanna thank you guys for working so hard on it and, and getting it done. It was really needed and you did your hard work and brain power to do it.
Well, we're just, we're glad the issue was brought up. Sometimes we don't catch everything, so.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we waive the rules and approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-two zero nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you. Whew, all right. Other business. Joint workshop with the planning committee tomorrow at three o'clock.
Let's talk about steep slopes.
Yeah, let's talk.
That's tomorrow, Paul.
Didn't get enough of it today. Think I'll do all over again.
We're not gonna talk about steep slopes.
Thank you.
We're gonna stay out of the weeds. We're gonna have high-level discussion. We're gonna have a great time. We've been doing a lot of prep work for that, so we're excited to work with you. The commissioner and you, we're gonna make you sit separately. You can't be buddy-buddy with Gordy. You're gonna have to sit next to a commissioner.
Oh, good. I was, I thought you were making us sit separately from them, cause you were gonna taint them or something.
To the back.
That's right.
We're really looking forward to that discussion tomorrow. I think that there'll be some really good things that come out of that. So thanks for making the time and that's gonna be great.
It's here in this room, correct?
We are gonna meet in the multipurpose room.
Oh, I'll think. Thank you. Yeah, I'll make note. Yeah.
If you could make sure to gather a little bit early, we'll have this thing for you to sign and get that picture taken.
Okay, thank you, Janine. All right, very good. We have a UAC management conference Tuesday through Thursday, April twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth down in Ogden. We have David Z, Barbara, Gina, Carl, David, and E going. I will go the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, but I probably will not go on the twenty-sixth. And so, any changes on any of that?
Paul, you need to come.
I'm at, I was supposed to tell.
Yeah, the first day is the rural caucus. We also do have county meeting that evening. So who will be back for that? How many members will we have back for that? That's the twenty-sixth. You'll be here? Okay, so Carl will be here, I'll be here.
I should be here.
Okay, so we'll have a quorum then. Awesome. Okay, very good. Smithfield Health Days Parade, Saturday, May fourteenth at ten AM. David Zook and myself. Anyone else planning on attending that parade?
I'll be out of town. I can't be there.
I don't know yet.
Gina doesn't know yet. Okay?
Depends if it's raining.
I was just gonna say that.
Depends on if it's raining.
It rained every time I went to that.
All right. Council member reports. Carl, let's start with you, please.
Well, my question was answered when we talked about the, the issue with having what's the word I'm looking for?
Lobby?
Lobbyists, yeah, so, nothing else.
Thank you, Carl. Gina?
I wanna remind the council that we're, that we're still missing liaisons to the sheriff's office, the building department, the victim's advocate, and I'm sure there's somebody else I could talk to.
Well.
Matt, Matt's department too.
Matt's department.
Yeah. Okay, I, Janine and I were looking at this, and yes, some of these items have been dropped off, especially with the sheriff's department. But the last one we had was in twenty-twenty-one, and it lists David Erickson as the liaison with the sheriff's department.
Twenty-twenty-one.
In twenty-twenty-one.
Matt's casino's the back of most sheriff cars.
Okay. So, um, I think we'll leave.
They wanted to keep me, but they said something about incarceration.
Ah, okay, okay. This is what we've got as of twenty-twenty-one. Gina Worthing with the Treasurer and Visitors Bureau. Barbara Tidwell with the Clerk Auditor. Paul Borup with Finance and Human Resources. David Erickson, Sheriff. Nolan Gunnel, Recorder IT. Carl Assessor. Yeah, it's right here in big letters.
Give me a copy.
Okay. Carl Ward, Assessor. Gordon Zillis, Attorney. Now, do we need to make any changes on this?
I love Carl and Amy, but they might need a break from me.
Okay, so. So.
Not Carl, I'm sorry. Cameron. I said Cameron.
What, pardon me?
Can I, can I do victim services? I talk to Terrell a lot anyway.
Okay, victim services.
Might as well. Just wanted to backseat tonight.
I'm a victim. I'm a victim.
That's going to be Gina. Who was the other one?
Matt.
Matt. Matt's department. I would love to work with Matt, but I don't know that much about it. Maybe he could teach me.
I was gonna say, I could take Matt.
Matt, if you were to pick someone.
Yeah, who would, who would you choose, Matt?
So you got a big office. We'll all join you.
The other thing you might say about Matt is Nolan and I are really pretty close to that area.
Okay.
It might be easier for one of us to go.
And Nolan, you said you would be willing to do that?
My understanding is, is they have a break room and some refreshments, so I'd be glad to be there.
All right.
Should've picked, should've picked Matt.
What other department did we have? We have victim services, Matt's.
Cool.
We settled the sheriff departments.
I feel like we're still missing one.
Are we missing someone?
Did you get public defender?
Public defender. Okay.
I'll go hang out with the public defenders, cause I'm gonna need their services at some point in time.
All right.
You'll need the continuing ed versus your next course.
So Paul?
Say, I'm on, I'm so on a phone basis with the public defenders, they know my phone.
Good.
Did someone have the development services?
No, I don't see anything on there.
Nolan was that.
Development Services.
Development Services. Yeah, no, it has David Zook.
Isn't that Public Works, Rose?
Do you wanna re-pick?
What's that?
He does the planning commission.
So planning commish, do we wanna put, okay.
That used to be the other.
There's multiple parts to development services, so however you want to.
That's why, yeah, I brought it up. Does it all go into one?
Okay, development services, Public Works. Right now, David Zook's on that. Do we want to change? Are we leaving it as is? Nolan, what did you want to do?
I'm, I'm with P and Z, so that makes a natural, but you want me there?
So planning and zoning with Nolan, is that all right, Chris?
That's the building, GIS, planning, zoning, regional trails, Kenwood planning.
White Pine Lake, is that where you get to go to?
Sounds like a Christmas song.
And I could be the overflow, Chris. If Nolan, if Nolan's not giving you a hard enough time, you call me and, and I'll.
Okay.
Did somebody say you had a treat for, for?
You're doing public works too then? Matt? Wow.
He had a refreshment center out there and a car wash, so.
All right. Do we need to make any other changes or add anything else? Dave, you're still okay with the sheriff?
As long as I don't stay.
Okay, good deal.
You bet. Heaven's sakes.
So we have some people that are doubling up here, and you're all okay with that. Victim Services, Gina. Matt's Department, Nolan. Public Defender, Paul. Planning and zoning, Nolan and Paul. Okay, very good. Then we'll leave as is. Thank you for bringing that up.
Gordy said you would help on Matt's.
Yeah, oh, on Matt's stuff?
Okay, no, I'd like a refreshment. I don't live very far from Matt's.
Then I will put Gordy's name on there for that also. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you bringing that up. Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right.
John, do we have a break room in the attorney's office?
David Erickson, your report? Anything to report?
No, no, I, I don't. I, I do, but I'm gonna keep everything to myself right now. All, all good.
Gordy?
I'm gonna say that I really enjoyed the county convention. I mentioned that that felt so good. Did not have any pressure on you. You just went and enjoyed it.
And you still gave a speech.
Good deal. Thank you, Gordy. Nolan?
The executive earlier was talking about the waste planning, he's going to that, should not, that involves your council members, so that they're fielding some of those things.
Um, yes, I, that was one of my questions. I agree with that. Should we have a county council representative? And I understood that we could, that we kind of understood that David Erickson would be involved in that, because he's on.
He was on one of the committees.
Yeah, he's on the committee.
I'm on the solid waste board.
Right.
Well, as a liaison, but that's, I don't know why we aren't using that as our. Sounding board. Yes, why that board, why we don't meet, and that's, that'd be the initial, you know, let's start. I mean, that's gonna be a big impact to the county. The council needs to be very much informed of it, so we need representation there.
Dave, would you like to do that, please? That'd be great. And if you could make sure the council keeps updated on all of that. Thank you, thank you. Paul, report.
Only, only two things. If Gordon had such a wonderful convention experience, it's only because all the press is having a wake that they're not gonna be able to quote you anymore. Well, I just kinda thought here was Dave Erickson was making a lot of noise. I thought he's gonna replace me. We'll be okay.
And then, and then the second thing, I just wanted, this is more of a bring it up, put it on the, put it out there for folks. I think with some of our space needs in the county, that we've got some election equipment. We need to make sure we have a good home for, and we need to be talking about that. I don't know if maybe the airport location, we need to maybe start talking about that, but we need to find a good home for elections equipment.
Wasn't that going in the, uh?
We should probably look at some things. You're gonna hear some stuff.
We only have about a month before we really need to start writing up. I really value the opinion of the council, going to do what we can to find the best. If you would like us to move into that location as a temporary house for our elections equipment into the airport, it's sitting vacant at the moment. We also have a.
The whole hangar is.
We had approved for that to be rented out.
Yeah.
We did approve that to be rented out. We're told it had to be used for aviation only.
Yeah.
Their lease is typically required, so it's, so it needs to be used.
Wait a minute. I got some guys out at the hangars that are doing a lot of other things besides aviation.
And that's always an issue that we have to.
Watch out for.
On the Airport Authority Board.
Interesting.
Well, then we should set the example and use it all in the aviation.
My understanding is that if you lease it out, like sublease it, then it's really meant to be used for county purposes. And you can, it's a potential loss of contract. Now, I can't speak thoroughly through that, but they also have said that it does not be to only be used for aviation. I have, I've got a month.
I think, let's clarify that. I think, we talked about that a little bit in that last board meeting. There wasn't a lot of heartburn.
Do you still have the building down there at the fairgrounds?
It doesn't have a restroom, doesn't have any running water, it's not AD/AD accessible, so that my poll watchers can't come watch the polls. Elections is getting more strict every bill that passes, and those are some of the requirements that we have.
That'd just get the elections done quicker if there's no restroom.
I would use a porta potty.
Well, that's, if there's some issues with that, I mean, that's, that's the thing that we probably need to.
Okay, I have, I have a couple, are you finished?
Um, yes.
Okay. I have a couple of things to bring up. At convention, I had a lady want to know why we didn't have public input with every meeting. And I told her that that was just not something that we've done in the past, and she was very upset that I didn't have a better answer. So I would, I told her I would bring it up to the council. So council, what's your feelings on?
Madam Chair, could I comment real quickly?
Yes, please.
I believe there's a bill from the last session that's required. Did it die?
It was killed.
I was tracking it.
It died. It died an awful death.
Don't they have the ability for public comment if they contact the chair and ask to be on the agenda?
Yeah. Can I add something in talking to some of the commissioners about that very bill? They have had issues in, and I'm thinking of, oh, I can't remember what his name is. Anyway, they have had people that virtually come and kinda take over their meetings. They bring big groups, they won't leave, they, they cause problems. The thing about the public comment, if any member of the public needs something, they can call any one of us and get done what they need to do. And if they come here and they need something done, because they were not on the agenda twenty-four hours before, we can't even take action on what they're asking. So it's, to me, it's kind of a futile thing. If they want us to know something, they can call us, talk to us, and we can get, get done what they need. That's my position.
And having had that situation on the Logan City Council, it's a disaster.
Okay.
Those meetings drawn on and on and on, and it's the same people every time, same issues every time. They want an answer immediately, so they're talking, it really, it's a sounding board for their gripes.
Okay, and I, and I told this lady, and I didn't get her name, exactly the same thing that Gina said. I said, who is your representative? She didn't have an answer. And I said, then best thing to do is to find out who your representative is and contact them. So that's where I left it. So I'm saying.
We agree.
We agree. Okay, no public input. The other thing is, I've had this gentleman been contacting me. He lives in Nevada. His name is Rajan Zed, and he wants us to schedule him to read an invocation at our council meeting on May twenty-fourth. He's been after me since probably January on this. I did talk to Jeff Scott from over in Boxhelder County. Apparently, this gentleman has gone to their meeting and offered a prayer. And Jeff Scott said it was okay, but I told this gentleman I would talk to the council and get your input on that.
What's his?
What's his motive?
He doesn't give me a motive, other than he just wants to give us a prayer. And when I talked to Jeff Scott, he said that it was just a nice little prayer. Other than that, I don't know.
Once a year, we have, what, the day, the day of the prayer?
Exactly, and I told him that we could invite him to do that for us. He did not want to do that, because he is not going to be in town that day.
Do it next year.
Did you say he's from here or from Nevada?
He's from Nevada.
In their county, rather than harking to somebody from Nevada?
Yeah.
Say that again.
Aren't we responsible to listen to those within our jurisdiction, rather than somebody, especially from Nevada?
Yeah, and that, see, that's my feeling, too, he didn't want to tell me where he was calling from, because I said, where, he started talking, I said, where are you calling from, he said Nevada, and I said, oh.
Then he can pray in Nevada.
Tell him, just tell him to pray for me, I need it, and we'll call it good.
Okay, all right, so I will let him know that I discussed that with the council, and, um, we'll invite him for next year, see if he'll be in town for the day of prayer for next year.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you, and the only other thing I have is I would like Roger Yost from Bragg to come and give us a report, and make scenes, we're not going to do a